Well, welcome everybody to the May 12th 2020 special board meeting of the San Luis Coast Unified School District. Just an FYI, the board did meet in closed session and we discussed public employee performance evaluation. And that was a superintendent's evaluation. Is there anybody who would like to address the board? On any topic right now, regular public comment. I'm not going to read through the usual stuff. Eve, are you, can you, if you're okay, are you good with that? Okay, good. Seeing no one, let's move on to item 6.01, local accountability plan. And I believe that is Dr. Prater. Want to introduce this?
I do, yeah. Thank you for this study session. We're actually going to cover three items that that will, hopefully, we can fit it all in. There, the opportunity now is for the board to, to maybe roll up your sleeves and ask some questions that you might be curious about as it relates to our LCAP. Next Tuesday and then the 17th and then on the 31st, we'll have our first reading and the second reading of the LCAP. And that's by way of statute and law. So this is an opportunity right before we get there to ask clarifying questions. Diane Frost and Leslie O'Connor will present the LCAP. And then following that, we'll have an item on the athletic safety protocols that we, our district's been working on. In response to what we believe are really important safety interventions and measures to formalize them. Today, we'll, you'll, you'll hear about them. We'll have a presentation about them, discussion only. And then hopefully on June 21st, our final meeting before the end of the year, we'll ask the board to take action on those protocols. And then the third item, yes, Evelyn?
I'm sorry, you just said something and I didn't hear it. So you said on June 21st, we were going to be approving, I didn't.
The board, the safety athletic protocols, yep.
Thank you, sorry.
And, and that way we can formalize them and then really build it into the system of our training of staff. Specifically with two new IDs. This will be really important. It's a great opportunity to build our culture around safety, especially with coaches and parents and kids. This new day, you know, requires greater vigilance and that's what these things will engender. And then finally, we're gonna, Mr. O'Connor's gonna talk about class rankings at Morro Bay High School and San Luis Obispo High School, which has been a long practice. And Mr. O'Connor would like to talk to you about that as well. No action items on any of these three items today, just really a discussion and hopefully good information for you. So Mrs. Frost, please take it from here.
All right, thank you. Hi, no Mandy's with us. Mandy, I'm going to share screen. All right. All right, happy to be here to chat with you about the LCAP again. We've come before the board a number of times. Just taking you through the process that we've gone through, Rick Mayfield and Isla, Leslie O'Connor, secondary director, myself, Laura Storm, building this LCAP using feedback. So I just want to kind of dive in, starting by reminding you of something that I shared with you before. Feedback gathering in San Luis Coastal's LCAP process is, is critical to the work we do. And we spend a tremendous amount of time making sure that our stakeholders do give us feedback. ELAC meetings, meetings, activities, surveys, ELAC, all of our school sites get the survey, but then we also have a discussion with them. And I think you know that Mr. Pinkerton and I go around to each of the schools and do that. Our equity team gives us feedback, common ground task force. Our principals give us feedback through principals meeting. Our student senate gives us feedback. And then we have our youth truth survey. I don't want to in any way forget the power of youth truth. And actually, that is alongside our California Healthy Kids Survey that we do every, every other year. Really important feedback that we receive. I've printed over here on the right, the survey results. So these are the numbers of people who completed the survey. But I want you always to remember that we do get feedback in other ways. We get emails from our communities. We've had open forums, these activities through D-LAC and E-LAC. So all of this comes together to help us inform the LCAP. You remember that we had 505 parents complete the survey, five community members, and 219 staff members. We're able to disaggregate a little bit of our SED families. We had about 147 complete the survey. Of our EL families, we had 137. And we had 18 families from foster and homeless youth complete the survey for us.
Could I ask about that point?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Would the EL families be 137 included into the SED families? I mean, not that all EL, they're not all the same, I realize.
Yeah.
Many are. So is that like, it's not 147 plus 137.
Are they unduplicated numbers?
They are unduplicated numbers.
They are unduplicated.
I believe they're unduplicated. I can check with Rick Mayfield. He does the survey for us.
Yeah.
What we know is we have far more SED families that, who then have taken the survey. We're listing there 147. And I know that we have, you know, we're 40% SED in this community or in our district. We have 137 EL families who completed it. We're far more than that. So it's a start and every year we hope to increase the number of our subgroup populations. Hi, Aunt Evelyn?
Well, what I really appreciate about this is that we are disaggregating to really try to reach out.
Yeah.
What I'm wondering is, not asking right now, is, you know, the raw numbers, the percentages of, you know, of I mean, that's a significant number such as, you know, the, it seems like a small number, 18. But, you know, I don't think we've ever had that membership of it. So that's, you know, huge. But at some point, if we could look at percents of, out of.
Percents of the total, yeah. And I hear what you're saying about foster and homeless youth. We have 18 listed there. We think we're about 300 in our district at last count. So, I mean, we could do that math. But it is increasing each year, which we're very happy about. Mr. Buckman, did you have a question?
Yes. Independent, so I did some of these percents and they're really scary. And I appreciate that there may be more. So 505, if we only had 7,000 parents, which that's number of students, that's 7% community, 5 of 30,000, even right around. 5% of the community, if you combine the two communities, San Luis and Morro Bay, it's 0.0862%. And I know that includes kids and everything. It's just, I guess my question is, and I don't need it now, but it's like sometimes we do other surveys. Like what colors do school buses need? Or, so I'm just kind of interested in how this data at some point in the future can sort of reflects, you know, when we talk about the bell schedule. We send a survey to high school, to high school parents, the percentage. And then if we can, if we can capture this for next year and so that we have an ongoing, so now you've got this little box. I don't know if you can give us last year, but if we can just capture this year after year after year, just like we would hold any other cohort accountable. Because I just, I'm just hoping we're reaching more and more people.
Well, I can tell you.
And thank you, thanks for this effort. I mean, I've committed to track for it.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. And I appreciate that. I do remember earlier in this process, we presented to the board these numbers and actually how we were able to secure the surveys to be completed. I know that it's greater numbers of survey completions than it was last year. And last year is greater than the year before. So I might be able to get that for you. And I hear what you're saying in a presentation for next year. Let's look at that ongoing data and see if we are increasing every year. I do know that the efforts are, they're overt. They're going to the D-LAC meetings. They're going to the E-LAC meetings. This represents the people who literally completed the survey. We did get information from our D-LAC and E-LACs that are noted in other ways. On documents that the LCAP advisory that was able to see. Same thing with our equity group. They did activities and they gave us feedback while also filling out the survey. So I think that's important for the board and the public to know as well. The survey is a very important way for us to get feedback from our community, but it's not the only way that we get feedback that informs the LCAP.
So two other questions on this slide. When we go to the bullet points.
Yes.
I wasn't able to attend all the parent leaders meetings. Did, did, did you guys do an LCAP at the parent leaders meeting?
We've done a number of LCAP presentations.
Okay, because it's, it's just, it just got overlooked here. My, just my, I wasn't there. And then sometimes we're now referencing the California Healthy Kids Survey and sometimes we sort of don't reference it. So that, you did look at that as well for data?
Well, we don't.
Can apply to this?
Yeah. The California Healthy Kids Survey, as you know, we get it every other year.
Okay.
But that data remains as part of our metrics. So, yeah. Good reminders. Got it. All right. Let's talk a little bit about the feedback that we got. Again, EL families and SED families. You know that it's EL families, SED families and foster homeless youth. And we looked specifically because these were larger groups of feedback. We wanted to know exactly what these families were telling us. So our ELD families were telling us hands-on learning, relevant learning. They wanted newcomer support, mentioned specifically professional development for teachers. So they knew how to work with, with English learners. They talked about SEL support. They talked about increased counseling support, transportation from after-school, activities that their kids participate in and especially tutoring. And then summer school. What are some summer opportunities for our kids? Our SED families, when we disaggregated out, again rigorous, relevant, hands-on learning, individualized and small group learning. They wanted small group learning for their kids. Talked about trauma-informed. So we're still talking about SEL in our classrooms with our SED families. We're talking about counseling support, tutoring, after-school opportunities and summer opportunities again. So both groups looking at that same opportunity for their kids. So now I just wanted to remind you of our focus areas and I'll go one by one. And then just give you some notable, notable action items that I want you to be aware of in there. Mark?
So when, when we look at slide three, and then we start progressing through this slide.
Correct.
Something that would help me, I don't know if it'd help other board members, I'll defer, is like, if this list was, EL families was E1, E2, E3. And then further down in the document, N org, to that great, the draft PDF that we have.
Yeah.
If we could, if we could identify where those were addressed in F1 and F3.
Yeah. I hear, yeah. We've talked, we've talked about that before, the idea of taking that big LCAP document and highlighting those things that are new and those things that come from stakeholder feedback. The stakeholder feedback was so wide and we didn't want to misrepresent something as feedback that wasn't feedback. So you'll see on the slides that I go through, I do try to target those items and call to your attention the things that are specifically for feedback. What I want you to know is it's not an inclusive list. Our feedback was wide, right? It was voluminous and they gave us a lot of thoughts and ideas that are in the LCAP. So I'm hoping that the specificity that I put in here helps you see the connection between an item and the feedback we received. Yeah, Evelyn?
Well, I think, you know, one of the things that it's difficult, must be difficult for you to chase out is, you know, having an idea that is vital best practices and really, you know, holds us accountable for what we're trying to do, you know, could be different. So even though we may have stakeholder feedback, but it expresses a desire, if it doesn't really follow the guiding principles and, you know, accountability and really the target. So even though it's so important to get this, it's also keeping in mind there's this umbrella. Yeah, I don't think that's a right way to say it, umbrella focus, but.
And then I would also add that we get feedback that is genuine and the person providing feels like this will make a difference for the district or students, for our families. But it's not something that we can implement or it's not easily implemented in an LCAP. I remember we got feedback that said we should have seven-period day in our middle schools. That is a process that cannot be addressed in the LCAP. So we do get feedback like that and we have to go through it. And then I would also remind you, and I've said this before, but we do have that LCAP advisory that's representative across the district. And they take that feedback and they disaggregate it for us and really show us what they believe the stakeholders are telling us. Mr. Buckman, I hear what you're saying. So the slides being a little bit more committed to the actual focus we're talking about?
Well, I, I know that they're committed. It's just that I, you know, I'm trying to see, oh, hands-on learning. How is staff, where is, so I know there's like sections and then sub-As and then sub-numbers. But sometimes in documents like this, you actually see the reference back to the mother document, right? So in the F1A, it might have, I don't know, whatever we choose for this, three bullets would be EL families, hands-on learning. And so I can, I can see, because I really appreciate Evelyn's comments just now about, and your response about, well, sure, if you want red school buses, but it is not going to be in the LCAP.
Yeah.
All right. So I appreciate that. So you've done a great job teasing, let's say, these ten out. But then I had trouble matching them up as I went even down, just the slides, much less through the F2A12. Okay?
Point taken. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay. So a reminder of focus area one, which we've discussed before, rigorous, relevant and engaging instruction. Our goal, all students will achieve substantial academic gains through rigorous, relevant and engaging instruction and curriculum. This is feedback that you've already seen. This is from our LCAP overview document, the long colorful document. This was disaggregated by our LCAP advisory. And as you can see, it's split out for you, students, parents and staff. Okay? So parents and community across subgroups. This is just general information and feedback given by that group. So students, the academic planning for high school. Teachers more culturally aware, desire to be engaged. I don't want to read everyone, but you've seen these before and you can see what our LCAP advisory prepared for us. If you go on to the next slide, I've put some notable action items in here. So we took the feedback in addition to what we already have in the LCAP. And we, I want to note some important points to draw your attention to. Planning days for teachers. We did not have that in the prior LCAP. Our teachers asked for that as, as very, very critical to lesson development, to unit development, to PLC with their peers, to learning as a team. We've struggled with substitutes. We're hoping next year that we are able to support planning days for our teachers. Yes, Evelyn?
So that, and so that gets to my question is, is looking through the document. So we're looking at planning days within the school year and not so, so even, so two, I guess, questions are. And, and, you know, our human resources, department, everybody's working, so we're trying to secure subs. But even if we have subs, the continuity of learning that happens in the classroom is really less than, even, you know, it just isn't. So every time we kind of, you know, those planning days, we are asking our teachers to be outside of the classroom. Does disrupt a certain continuity of the learning, so.
I, I absolutely agree with what you're saying. So let me start with your first piece. Is the planning days during the year or during the summer? It's both. So we're offering planning days during the summer. But we also heard clearly when we went to school sites and in one particular site was very eloquent about the value during the year of getting together with their grade level cohorts and discuss student learning, discuss data and plan together. And they felt like it was a real loss over this year, the fact that they were not able to work together like that in a professional learning community, trying to improve instruction for kids. So then you find yourself in this balance. Yes, they're out of the classroom, but what's the overall value to the classroom and the students and the school community? It's a balance. So.
If I need jumping to, it was interesting as we went around because I would say three years ago, when we had this conversation, people were upset about being pulled out of grade level meetings and having to do this. And now they're like clamoring for, I miss meeting with all the first grade teachers in the district. Hearing what they do and how it impacts, you know, so it was an interesting kind of deep back, right? So I think for the board to know, I know that in terms of planning for like the first three days back, we've, instead of having this all-district meeting and telling people to get to do it, like, we're going to give that to the sites to maybe do some of that. So things like that. In, in the contract, I will tell you, this, this was kind of our conversation, TCT, in particular secondary. And giving them half the TCT time to do this type of work. So it's not just substitutes. It's not just pulling out of the classroom. Like, so, so building that into TCT time, I think protecting that TCT time for, for teachers was some of the things we gave, you know, when we were doing negotiations to, to hopefully get some of that worked out.
No, I, I hear, and I hear that value and I've heard from, you know, teachers on staff about that. And it's one of the things that, this is a calendar issue in that, you know, districts looking at, you know, models across, staying across the country about how they plan a day out of a month where it's, you know, it's a student free day and they do other things. And so we don't have, so it's, you know, looking ahead, you certainly can't look at that, you know, now and there's the issue of it. But it is that critical time that teachers do need for their grade levels and we definitely hear that. So that's important. But it is concerned about that.
Agreed. Thank you. Yes?
So when I look, for example, newcomer curriculum, what I'm, is that for professional development? So a newcomer meeting, that's one of the needs we do, okay? But within the parent one, it asks for newcomer help. So when I see this here, is that staff? Is that parents?
Meaning is the newcomer curriculum, is that request from staff or from parents?
No, it, it's a request from both groups.
Right.
Okay. But I can't determine whether that's parent, right? This, I can't remember what section.
Yeah, we're in focus, focus line.
Yeah, and that's pretty, so is this, is this a response to the parent, this notable action item? Are you guys, does the LCAP include funding for parent newcomer and staff newcomer? Both or none?
I'm not sure. Let, let me try to answer your question and then you tell me if I'm completely.
I know, I see newcomer LCAP.
We did have our EL parents ask, you know, some of the feedback we received was that they wanted help in the area of newcomer. Whether it's the work at the newcomer center, right, the, the assessment, the work with the secretaries, or their introduction to an EL1 in a classroom. Our teachers are asking for curriculum to work with newcomers. So we are hearing from both families and staff. So are you saying that on the action item in the LCAP, you'd like to know who exactly asked for that?
Right. And here, I mean, you, I see the, you're hearing the word newcomer.
Yep.
And I just want to know if you're hearing it from both groups and whether this bullet applies to both groups. What I'm hearing you say is, no, that it's just staff.
No, I, no, that's not what I'm saying. This bullet, and this is a broad bullet. And you will see a couple of different action items in the LCAP that are going to address the idea of our newcomer families and students. Evelyn?
Just quickly, about rough number of newcomers that we have?
I can't answer that. I'd have to ask Rick about that. He'd know that off the top of his head.
It just seems that, you know, our numbers aren't growing. So, but it's an important, a lot just, not, not.
Right. And newcomer and EL are different, right? So we're both, right? So that's. So to me, I, just to add on to Lance, you know, the conversation, because we do have Title I funds. We do have Title III funds that are specifically for parents. Professional development, parent input, right? So those are spent. I think to me, this is also, this is also looking at academic results. And what we, you know, we need to make gains with our EL students. So we need, you know, we need to look at our EL curriculum and our EL instruction. And so that's part of, you know, it's, it's not just what people told us. It's also the, this is where those academic results come in, right? Trying to work on that.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah, please.
The third one, the CTE pathway counselor for the middle schools. In talking to Liz Moore, I've had an ongoing interest even before I was on the board in the expansion of the CTE curriculum and pathways. She, she expressed just to me on this, a need for a middle school counselor. So my question is, does that need to be stated anymore? Is it a done deal? Have they already been hired or is it something that's in the works?
Well, actually, and I think that Mr. O'Connor could help us with that. We have already posted for this position as through a CTE grant. So you want to talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah, yeah, it's a good question. So actually, we just interviewed yesterday. We interviewed candidates yesterday and we've got some candidates coming back to Los Osos Middle School next week. Actually doing a presentation with our students at Los Osos Middle School for us to move forward with the hiring process to have that counselor in place for next year. I'm really excited about the candidate pool that we talked about yesterday.
Okay. And I'm not informing you, but just for the record, I just wanted to say, and, and the middle school counselor, the whole point of that, so the kids will be able to identify what their strong suits and skills are. And instead of just going to point-blank some university, they will know what they're strong in and what their, their lifelong careers could consist of, better identifying who they are as a unique individual.
Yeah, it's ironic you asked that because Diane and I were just talking about that yesterday. You know, as I shared out our vision for this position, it's exactly that. We want our counselor at the middle school that we're bringing in in that CTE focus to be meeting with all of our seventh and eighth grade students, specifically looking at the six-year plan and specifically around career identification. So obviously, as a goal, we're talking about career and college, college and career. Well, we are absolutely focusing with that council, with our students about career development. Having that introductory conversation with each and every seventh grader and each and every eighth grader to make them fully aware not only of career aspirations, but starting that process of pathway knowledge and understanding and awareness with parents before they get to high school with the goal that we can start perhaps some of those pathway introductory courses in middle school.
Yeah.
That's the goal.
Yeah. And Lincoln, it also was I innovate in the elementary school.
100%. And so that's the next bridge is working with Christine and the foundation because we're mapping out not only schools to watch with regards to the middle schools. Where we're actually visiting next week, a district in Los Angeles that's a national school to watch at the middle school level, a district, and with secondary innovation. And so we're linking I innovate at the elementary with secondary I innovate. And the nexus is the middle schools or are the middle schools.
Can I just ask, what district is that visiting?
Excuse me?
What district are you guys visiting?
We're visiting Weisberg.
And then the only thing I'd add and then to you, Mr. Buckman, is that we also, in this LCAP, that's not addressed in this presentation. I don't have it as a notable action item. We have a program called CCGI, which is the California Colleges Guidance Initiative. All of our secondary counselors use it with our students. It's interest surveys, it's career surveys, it's college research. It's really a very involved program that goes down the road that you're talking about in terms of helping guide our kids towards a college and career. Mr. Buckman?
Yes, so we go back to the prior slide, we can, so we look at students and we did a great job involving students, that's right. Having great student center. But when I look at the student bullet points, is there some way, doesn't have to be today, to relate those to some of the notables that you have on the next slide? Because I'm not seeing quicker pace. Is that what professional development, where that would come in?
It could be and when you, especially the hands-on learn, so you're looking at quicker pace, fewer nodes, more activities. Sometimes the suggestions will not, as I said earlier, will not find themselves in the LCAP. We might share that with our staff without actually doing PD for our staff in that area. You see that we have desire to be engaged in hands-on learning. If I come down here and I look at the clarity training, that's all about engaging learning across the district. And very, we've got a two-year plan with engaging learning. I think you guys have heard about our work with Michael McDowell, who is doing surface student transfer. We're already training right now voluntary elementary and secondary teachers. He's done two full days of training with elementary, middle and high school teachers in this. He's done two full days of training with elementary, middle, and high school teachers in this area of engaging learning. Next year, we will have him um in November with all secondary schools on this topic. So sometimes the feedback we get might not be um really obvious in the action items, so your question makes a lot of sense to me, is what I'm saying.
I just, okay, I guess ultimately, when I, if the student were to look at this, was my input value? In fact, suggest an item towards the next student center, but it might be other things.
Yeah, yeah, might be um interesting follow-up as you bring it up to with our student senate, right? You spoke to us, this is what we heard, and this is what we did, and this is why we didn't address this, and my apologies.
Right.
I think it's important to know too, those student centers go back to their staffs, I mean. Leslie can probably speak to how it works at Slow High, and they literally go back to a staff meeting. And share all this feedback, like, hey, teachers, this is what we want you to do, and and have that dialogue with staff, so. It's not necessarily even a cost item, it's more staff, like listening to kids, thinking, okay, well, how can I implement that in my classroom?
Good.
You know, things that I, and I think that's been a positive thing, right, I mean, in terms of the kids and their feedback.
Well, that's, that's a good challenge.
That was, that was, that was one of my questions at the board meeting you had. Last, whenever it was, two, two Tuesdays ago was, so you're presenting this, kind of, how do you know this is being implemented, you know? I think that's important, because my, frankly, a concern I have is that that the students will be presenting these things to the staff. And then the staff will either take it or leave it, and it's, or we're really talking about changing staff behavior based on feedback from students. Our, you know, our customs.
Yeah.
I was still very briefly about the youth truth feedback, the youth truth feedback is so. Uh you know, profound in the engaging activities that we're seeing here in this document about. Hands-on, relevant learning, that's where I've noticed over the years, a lot of feedback coming back directly from students, and we're talking about ninety eight, ninety percent, ninety nine percent of our students. Taking the youth truth survey, because we give it school-wide, right, at all the secondary schools. And so when you're seeing that clear identifier, uh hands-on, relevant, engaging, faster pace, those are terms that are absolutely used. And articulated by almost ninety-nine percent of our students, and we're seeing great feedback there, and then that becomes part of the staff development and the staff meeting reflection. As we share those data points out, we're pulling the mirror out to ourselves and saying. Like, hey, this is fifteen hundred of our students saying the same thing to us, this isn't a hundred and thirty-seven students who took the survey. This is fifteen hundred of our students saying, across grade levels, and then we can break it down into segregated by grade level. And we can see, was there more ninth graders saying this than twelfth graders? And we're watching patterns and trends, where we see in the tenth and eleventh grade trends telling us that the students, their level of engagement is falling off. Where at the ninth grade, they're really excited and passionate, and at twelfth grade, they're coming back out of whatever that may be, but definitely tenth and eleventh grade. They're telling us, it needs to be better, more engaging.
So if, so with any gathering of data and committing to change, there's usually, and this, I have to thank Ellen for this, she keeps reminding me, there's an account of, not put it on her plate. There's an accountability column as well, and so I I don't know if that's functioning now, but can students actually go back and see? Oh, this, there's, there's, whatever, I don't know, there's this many more green buses, because we asked for green buses, there's been this change. And I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, yeah, because there's SMART goals, and the SMART goals will be revisited in the, in the um. Following re-submission of the data, I mean, of the survey, and then you'll notice that all the SMART goals have quantitative and qualitative data.
Yeah.
Some of the data is qualitative, it's perception data, it's like, how do you feel? But some of it is quantitative, like trash on the campus, and what evidence, there's more, there's more trash cans now. Recycling bins, and I mean, I'm hearing it, and I'm I'm seeing it, so, so yeah, there is an accountability metric. With our work, it's funny how these things weave together, the work we're doing with the contract on the instructional leadership teams. Is really relevant to this conversation, because what we're saying as a sort of a pushback. Is we believe that the interactions between the principal or or site admin and the instructional leadership teams on the site are critical. Because they use that, this data to then inform the single plans for student achievement. The SPSAs that you approve every year. So there's a multitude of data that crosses over, so there's lots of layers to this, and we're getting to this place of coherence. We're not, our our data accountability metrics haven't caught up with the, with the uh survey information and the, and the feedback we're getting. But it's just a matter of time before we get there, we're closing in on that, on that ultimate goal, where we can say. Have we listened to the kids, are we seeing the changes in their perceptions of what's happening? And from the staff perspective, are we seeing changes in their levels of engagement to change their practice? And that's how you should be seeing this as a board in the next several years, you should be hearing shifts and changes in how. Um how this information is coming your way, you should see the difference.
And we do see that to some extent, as I recall, because on the youth truth data that we see, it does compare, so like, do I feel engaged at my school? And per site, and it had previous years and this year, so we do, we do get to see, and 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 we notice it. I mean, we notice that it went down in some places and up in others, so what's going on here, what's different? You know, um so I think we do have, you know, some of that, some of that information at least.
And what's really hard, and it's important to also know this, and I'm sorry, I'm too.
No, no, you're good, thank you.
But this is, this is, I'll stop in a moment, I just gotta get this off, because I've been thinking a lot about it. There's independent and dependent variables, so when you take, when you take these surveys or you gather information. Some of the um reasons why students feel the way they do are directly related to our actions, okay? We can change those variables, we can influence those variables to then change the data set. One of the sticklers for me, since we started doing youth truth, is we haven't seen a discernible change. In how our LGBTQ youth um have felt about their relative safety in our schools. There's still that nagging sort of low-level sense that that the school's a welcoming place for them, okay? And and what I wanna say to you on that is, I think there's, there's variables that go well past our ability to change, right? There's societal impacts as well, and I'm not passing the buck, I just think this is, this is a bigger lift, right? No doubt about it, because we've made some really important changes in our work in this area. And then you'll notice also in the data that if you're a, a student, um if you are an EL student or a a student of color. At the elementary levels in the data, they're saying that that they feel safe at school. That particular subgroup of students are saying, yeah, I feel really good, feel like school's a safe place for me, I mean, I love it, everything's good. They get to middle school and high school, and the number drops radically fast. Like far faster than any other subgroup. So then the question is, is why, right? What is, what is the uh the antecedent to that? Is that societal, is it, is it that they're um developing, their their developmental needs are changing? Is it the interface of middle school, is it our middle school program that is not adapting to their needs? And and or is it, is it our blind spot, is it our bias, that we're developing middle school programs for a certain type of student population? And we haven't changed our, our structures and systems to become more adaptive and relational and welcoming? Now, that's very possible, which is why I'm so happy the board has leaned in to Schools to Watch. Because Schools to Watch is all about evaluating that, because it forces you to, um it forces the staff, the students, the parents. To self-reflect on their experiences in that environment. So I want you to know, we're getting closer and closer, I feel like we're every year etching closer to this. Place where we can fine-tune our assessments, fine-tune our awareness to what is, what is within our uh realm of control. And and then what can we do to improve it, I I know we're getting closer, yes?
I wish you hadn't spoken, because I have another question, no, I I appreciate, I just a a note of a curiosity, you know. Do we see a shift downward over in all our communities, you know, that in that perception? Where, you know, going from elementary to um to middle school, and that that's just, you know, a reflection of. I mean, I I don't, you don't need to answer that, but I'm just, you know.
Yeah, what's interesting is the um our um white subgroup. Um is below our EL and um minority subgroup um in elementary school, in terms of perceptions. And then it crosses like an X when they go to middle and high school. So it tells me that we have designed our secondary programs around white, socio-economically more privileged groups of kids. And we haven't wrapped ourselves around how to support our um more marginalized student populations when they get to middle and high school. And I know we're making inroads, because we're talking about it with the student senate, we're talking about it in our ILTs, the board's talking about it. Uh and it's not one single solution set, by the way, it's, because there are many variables, many factors that contribute to this. It's a mindset, it's a series of uh professional biases and systems analysis, it's all that. But I'm really ha- happy and thankful, the work that Leslie's doing with secondary group, they're really going after this in a very specific way. Uh it's just gonna take us a little bit of, I I really believe this is a, uh every year we make two or three steps ahead. And then within five years, we're, we're well down the road in doing some of this important work. But it it's a cultural shift in how we think, how we develop systems and structures. And as long as the economy can behave and stay with us, we'll be able to build an infrastructure and build a series of educational systems. That support all kids, um not just some kids, and we're still caught there, and we're making inroads, don't get me wrong. But the data tells us we have a long way to go, that's what it tells me.
Just a quick question, um Leslie, I think, if this is directed at you, Leslie, do you get the feeling that the um reasons the students segregate in high school? Has more to do with, as much to do with the parents who were integrated with other parents in the elementary school? And I think mainly the junior high school as well, and then that's when it falls off, and so that's something we should keep an eye on?
Yeah, I I, you know, ad freshly, I mean, I reflect on that, I think part of that, yes, I think a lot of it is that togetherness at the elementary level. And there's, they're on an elementary site for so long, I mean, six, seven years, and then multiple things within that dynamic, and then. You go through those in-between years of middle school, and there's that natural separation, and then they're kind of finding their own place in the world, so to speak. And I I I agree, I think it's the parent piece, but I wanna speak to something Dr. Crater mentioned, and as you was describing, this is an admirable reference, so I'm just gonna bear with me for a minute. We ran really successful pods at San Francisco during COVID last year, that mean phenomenally successful, the kids that were on campus, working with their teachers. We had probably three, three and a half, three, four hundred kids on campus on a daily basis, a lot of kids of color, a lot of kids of marginalized groups that needed extra support. On Fridays, we would have like barbecues and celebrations for the kids, it was amazing, an amazing cultural experience, but observing it. We knew our greatest challenge was how were we gonna keep this group of students who all were alike and looked alike? Visible when everybody else returned, and when everybody else returned, they went back into the shadows. It was remarkable to watch.
Which is.
They were leaders in their cohort of three, four hundred, but as soon as everybody else returned, they went back into the shadows.
And interestingly, I think.
The students, the the students that we had in our pods, the students of color, the students of economics, the students, and it was really, really fascinating, so our challenge, we we watched it, our challenge was. How do we make them feel comfortable to continue that leadership capacity?
So it would be interesting.
So that was a cultural piece.
It'd be interesting to 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 look at a Pacheco cohort. And and to see if there's the, if there's the same level of drop-off from kids going through Pacheco. When they get to middle school and high school, especially say at Laguna, where we're making efforts to have uh, to have bilingual classes, bilingual core classes. That would be an inter, that would be kind of an interesting thing to look at.
Well, Leslie, what you speak to is really goes back to all the way to that elementary.
Yep, right.
And and the reason why I say that is because, you know, many years ago, when I was, you know, in in, and and instructor. It was, at first I thought setting up groups was, as you said, not very heterogeneous, and what I found is, is exactly what you're talking about. When I intentionally had to set up groups, it was, it it sounds counterintuitive to have a particular group of students who, maybe they're all my heels. Then that leadership and that had to rise where if I set them up, where if I only had a few students, when they were in, you know. One in a group of, you know, or whatever, they would see it to the background, so the challenge is, you know, even sets up within our elementary. How you strategically set up those opportunities to then build into our secondary settings.
If I can piggyback on that, it was at Hawthorne, when we brought kids back, we had half the class on the playground, half the class in the classroom. Two teachers, kids that were, kids that were speaking that had never spoken in class before. And I don't know whether it's class size, smaller home, smaller group, um but I think, I know we all have stories, and I got mine too out, but. Um this sounds like maybe a future agenda, I don't know what we're talking about at some point, I know what the title on the list, but fair enough, I'm sensing a lot of interest here, folks on staff. And and at least on my part, so.
This is relevant to the LCAP.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
This is what we're, this is the LCAP.
Okay.
In my, in my way, thank you.
So I I don't wanna get us too far in the weeds, but we're we're doing this work in the middle school. We're we're, we're really hoping and and knowing that Schools to Watch is going to move us forward. What's, what's the structure we're gonna use in high school, is it WASP, is it WASC? You know, because because it it doesn't sound like there's an equivalent to Schools to Watch for the high school that at least we've we've talked about.
Yeah, I mean, well, obviously, that's WASC, so WASC is that self-reflection, and I would say that if you look at our Healthy Kids Survey. Um each year with regard to our ninth and eleventh grade students, sweeping statement, but our kids are telling us that they feel connected to our schools, and they feel safe in those regards. But I think to your point, it is part of the WASC reflection, to make sure that we're constantly looking at bringing students of color, of economics, of marginalized status. Uh into the culture and building the culture, so I know at each of the two high schools, it's, it's normally one of your WASC goals is to keep building your culture around specific students. And significant subgroups, both academic, and then that leads into what Dr. Crater talked about, their single plan for student achievement. Because they're all melded together under the LCAP, and then you're talking about your SPSA and your WASC specifically. But LCAP is the overarching.
I just wanna add one thing to this conversation, and that, and knowing you can move on, but, you know, I'm listening and thinking, one of the great takeaways I had the other night when Student Senate came and spoke. Was this sort of, at least to me, how I respond to it is, being student-led to some extent. And that we are providing these opportunities for all students, and it is so heart-touching to me. To hear our students from these subgroups and these, what we may otherwise feel marginalized or that they're alone. The bravery to come up and talk to us about, you know, this is what my experience is, and that they're, we're giving, we're providing them a platform to do that. And to hear it, to hear these voices that I think we all know are out there. But to provide them that opportunity, both not just because, but to have the skills and the the opportunities to interact with each other. To attend those staff meetings and speak out, and to share those experiences, and I think that that is a a really wonderful. And unique way that we are not just addressing needs, but hearing from them what their needs are. What their needs are and what their experiences are. And it's so meaningful to me that I, you know, I always leave events like that thinking. They're in charge, you know, we need to listen to this, maybe not about everything, you don't get to be in charge of. You know, how late prom's going to last and how many days they should go to school, how long summer vacation should be. But you know, in many of these ways that are so impactful on their lives and then by extension on the lives of those around them, not just the adults, but the other students. Who don't normally, that's not their experience, they may not think about, have the opportunity to think about the experiences of others who are not like them. In some ways, but just to do that and I um I see that as a huge benefit to common uh or resulting benefit of common ground. And of Student Senate and some of the avid um and going to CTE, you know, these opportunities to say. There are lots of different ways to be who you are, to express who you are, both socially and academically. And we wanna, we wanna know your experience and embrace it and support it.
One of the interesting things that just occurred to me is when they talk about school spirit, you know, I, school spirit is the school engagement. You know, I, you know, school spirit to me is not just a pep rally. Now that I'm thinking about it, it's it's that, it's that pep rally as that marker of school engagement. So these are important conversations. Anyway.
Okay, oh, just a couple more points on here. This is a really rich conversation and I appreciate it. Um we've got elementary, social studies, adoption process next year, that's our teachers asking for that. Secondary subjects pilots, we've got several content areas that we'll be looking at next year and then.
These are, these are brand new secondary subjects.
They are, yes, and I mean, Mr. O'Connor could give you more details, but we are in the planning stages for that. You'll see some math courses, you'll see biology, I believe, and a couple of other courses, looking at health as well. Uh devices, that's that's notable in our LCAP this year. We are looking at, I'm spending some money to update our devices and then my thoughts as well. Move on to focus two. All right, focus area two, multi-tiered academic support. All LCAP identified students will achieve substantial academic gains through a multi-tiered system of support. Again, the feedback that we receive from our students, our parents and our staff. And then looking at notable action items. There are many, many action items under focus area number two. I just wanted to call your attention to a few. You heard about, you have heard about our MTSS program across our elementary schools throughout the year in board presentations. Laura Storm is our principal on special assignment who is leading this charge. We're looking at learning loss, we're getting um. Expertise um through our MTSS, we're getting small group or through our AIT and AIDS. And working in very small groups with students who experienced learning loss and he will be continuing that next year. Um there are a number of secondary intervention classes in the LCAP, so we're not just looking at elementary. We also are supporting our secondary classes, avid sections at the middle and high school. And Mr. O'Connor and Jane Hawley, the um Secondary TOSA, have really worked this year to increase the number of students. Coming from the elementary school to middle school who participate in the avid program. I think it's a very, very positive um connection to reducing the achievement gap, really. Summer experience is in focus too, and you've heard a lot about this over the course of the year as well, a very expansive program for our students. We're just shy of two thousand students who have signed up. We have a host of um district teachers who are participating as teachers in this. We have enrichment opportunities, but we also have curricular opportunities, K eight. At that um high school level, they have, they can do original credit and they can do recovery credit. Um ELD focused curriculum and planning again. We have a DLI coordinator in focus area two. So for our dual language immersion school concentrating on Baywood, we've added a DLI coordinator. EL specialists are in this um this focus area, so that's across elementary schools from a partial to a one point OEL specialist. Um focusing on those students, helping teachers with EL strategies. And then we also have instructional aides for our TK classrooms and for our K classrooms. Every TK classroom across the district will have a full-time instructional aide and our kindergarten classrooms will have at least a halftime instructional aide. And I jotted on the right, just some feedback specific items. We hear from our parents, we hear from our staff. About small group opportunities, about learning loss, about MTSS. Our families in particular ask us about summer experience and providing opportunities for their students. Um we hear from our students themselves, secondary interventions. I'm not sure that the avid piece is specifically from the students, but definitely from our staff. And then TK and KAs, we heard, and this is Mr. Pinkerton and I, as we went across elementary schools, talk about support in those classrooms from the staff. All right, oh, go ahead.
Oh, no, I I you raised your hand.
Okay, sorry, thank you. So this is this two, right? We go up to this slide before this, all LCAP identified student groups. And so as I understand it, there's just three of those.
There are.
Okay, and the prime one, I don't remember, um EL, foster homeless.
And SED.
And SED.
Yes.
But we often talk about this applying to everyone. So this one in particular caught my attention because this is supposedly focusing just on the subgroups.
Well, the LCAP, uh the state of California requires that when you're building the LCAP, you're focusing on those three groups. What we've said in this district is that um when we're helping those groups, kids outside those groups will benefit as well. Let's take clarity, let's talk about, you know, clarity and the Michael Dowell work. We think that the, that will hit our subgroups because engaging learning will connect them to the classroom, to the learning. And possibly help with the achievement gap. Every student in that classroom will benefit as well, so we get those three subgroups, but we get other students benefiting.
Do we get, do we, do we get funds from the state there to literally say, here's Stanley's Coastal's LCAP fund?
We do get LCAP supplemental funds. We go to the end.
I mean, so it's different for us as a basic, it's a district, so what happens is, is we have.
I'm doing, it's a facetious question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so we have to look at our LCFF as a school district and what the supplemental amount would be. That we would receive as a school district and then we have to apply that, just like any other district, how state is.
So 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 my point is, is we don't get a, in my mind, we don't get a whole lot of LCAP money. So basically, this money's coming from other places. We're gonna see that down in slide ten.
We are.
Right, and so I'm, I guess I'll stitch this up until then. I'm just, I'm just confused about, are we specifically helping these subgroups? When we talk about this LCAP, so when I read this LCAP, I'm reading it as money that's being spent on those three subgroups. And in, and tangentially, it might help somebody else.
Yeah, that that there are ancillary benefits. It's the, it's the same. I I would think that it's very similar to Title I schools where interventions are put in place to specifically address the needs of. SED students, but they have a school-wide, potentially have a school-wide benefit.
Well, well, I'm I'm thinking, to your point, I'm thinking forty percent of our students are gonna be touched by this.
Exactly.
That's a pretty significant number of students.
Right.
Across schools.
So I'll, I'll, I have some more specific questions, but I just wanna unders- thank you.
Okay, this, this one speaks to me and I, I know it's not here. I mean, it's a pretty, I won't say pretty, it's an impressive document, I don't know a lot of what this document is. But I know at our last board meeting, um you know, I wondered about the growth target, it's not here, about five percent for all groups. And I know at the um CSBA presentation that I attended, you know, they were calling out districts for not having differentiated targets. Um for subgroups, because what I'm wondering is, in light of, you know, what has happened, I mean, every, you know, we've had issues with 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 our entire student body. And the idea that our, you know, rising, let's solve both. And even more than than ever. Um this is, you know, I guess, you know, called back to me, you know, when I looked at that, you know, our, just our data. From the numbers, if we continue to have the same targets that we've had in the past and for all groups. You know, for some of our groups that are like at ten percent, they will, if we continue to have a five percent growth. Then in three years, we're looking at. I mean, we're looking at dramatically still in numbers that, you know, are climbing. So I'm wondering. You know, just mathematically, um and new information, new technology. Would we, and and looking at, um you know, like I said, this presentation I read, um differentiating um growth targets? Because the other thing would be these subgroups that the LCAP is focusing on, that five percent, you know, it's out over. Ten years, have those groups consistently um met a five percent growth target? So, you know, historically, has that been accurate within those subgroups? And then given, you know, new information, um all this, you know, funding and it, you know, I mean, we say it's a lot of money, but it goes very quickly.
I mean, it does.
And. What does that, you know, I'm just wondering, you know, just the question is why we're using the same that we've been. And I'm not talking about us as a district, I mean, everybody, why we're using the same metrics when we really are trying to look at. This, you know, the subgroups and trying to accelerate that growth because it's, you know, what happens is, is just, you know, statistically. You know, you're high, you're low, you get the average. And so are we really able to differentiate and see that that accountability piece? That all those things that we're doing, is it really significantly moving those subgroups, that five percent, that five percent? We have that, I guess, that accountability.
You know, I'm certain that we could come up with historical data over the years that shows the growth. And I know that we do um presentations to the board where we look at subgroups and we have targeted or at least shown data over the years. As to their proficiency level, looking at, you know, either our own district assessments or looking at things like CASP. So we have looked at those subgroups. In terms of this document, I know Rick's, um Mr. Mayfield's um feedback during the last meeting. Was that five percent was chosen in particular because statisticians believe that it is a significant number, but not. Um too large to be unattainable. He talked about the idea that two percent, any two percent increase could be subject to any number. Of variables that might affect it, but when you're talking about a five percent increase, you really should be able to link that to. Actual improvement and not something going on with the kids or the classroom or absences or anything like that. Five percent is a reliable number.
But then we're not going to ever, given, given what has happened with these subgroups, we are, we are. What it says, it speaks instead with the amount of money that the state is giving, and I'm not speaking about our district.
Yeah.
Is is that we are going to have students in two LCAP cycles that are gonna be significantly below. If we are number one, not looking at differentiating and or two, looking at the data that is not only just five percent. But when I look at the data, you know, from one year to the next, it's different cohorts. So it's that longitudinal data that, okay, okay, you're one, and is that five percent the next year, five percent the next year? That longitudinal with the same cohort, that will give us that idea, or at least I I hate to say us, because it's just, you know, looking at it number-wise. That longitudinal data that is cohort-related, that tying into what we're doing. That, you know, can make a significant difference. So I'm wondering, can we look at that? You know, what's statisticians say?
Yeah. So I did speak with Mr. Mayfield about that and then Mr. Buckman to you. Um he says that they have looked at, it's been a couple of years, cohort data, all in cohorts, and I think there was a pres- presentation to the board. I cannot tell you exactly what data they were tracking, whether it was internal benchmark BAS, that type of thing. Or if they were trying to track the the CASP or whatever state assessment over the years and following the cohorts. So yes, that is possible. It's not what the LCAP asked for, but it is data that we can gather to inform our LCAP, if that makes sense. And then I'll go to Mr. Buckman then.
Thank you.
So um. So one of the things Mr. Mayfield has said, or what the staff has said is, it's. It's difficult, it's not always beneficial to do first grade and how did the first grade do when it improved the second grade in that same group of kid. Or cohort, because the cohort actually changes. And and I appreciate that, but I think, I mean, you know, there's, there's um a percent, like the two percent isn't that significant? You know, if the cohort changes by one, two, three percent, I'm just still thinking it's, it it's not significant enough to make me worry about it. Also, if the data was available, we could tease out the kids that have changed subgroups and still track the SED kids from cohort to cohort.
Yeah.
And so I'm, you know, I agree with Evelyn, um we, you know, comparing a new, a whole new group of first graders. To an old group of first graders is, I'm just, the data just scared me, it's just like.
I think you're right, the amount of change that most grade level have, um if we presented cohort, we want to acknowledge it, it would be a disclaimer. You know, for lack of a better word, but we could look at cohort like that, yeah, yes.
Right, so historically, there never has been a, it's always like, let's get second grade um. Results up and it was a different second grade every time and I always thought that was bonkers, but. So this direction that we're moving in does seem to make more sense except for, as noted, the the cohort changes. I know there was just a tremendous amount of transferring and moving around when I was going through a different district. And um in Title I schools and of course, you would have to take the whole grade level because you always try to break up the cohort of one classroom. So that it won't be going through as one group. You're trying to do it for social reasons, right, I think? To break up the cohort.
Yes, yes, good point.
So I would, I just wanna say something, go ahead, Chris. No, I'm just gonna say this whole conversation about cohorts is really interesting to me and I know we do as, we do have a lot more work to do. But that conversation will make people very uncomfortable, very uncomfortable. Because if I show my first grade class and my students, my subgroups make ten percent gains in my first grade subgroup. And then we split those groups up and we move them to second grade and one second grade cohort of that mixed group makes another ten percent. And the other one makes two percent, that's talking potentially about not just the cohort, but the quality. We could say the quality of teaching that that person's getting, that's gonna be, makes, that could make some people very, very uncomfortable.
So I'm not, so.
And I'm not saying we don't do it, I'm just saying it's gonna, you know, that's gonna be an uncomfortable conversation.
And I totally get that, I hear it, but I also, I hadn't even thought about doing classrooms. I I'm just talking about the whole first grade group, it's just a great number to have.
Like a cross.
And if you guys wanna deal with classrooms, I wanna, you know.
I I just, I just wanna say I I really appreciate this conversation and I have for a long time. The resistance, the barriers are significant culturally and professionally and even up in Desaclamata. Um they talk about disclaimer, they they beat it into the local districts that you are not supposed to do this cohort analysis. That you're, that there, there's, they hesitate to have you do that for a variety of reasons statistically. But what I would say is there's another conversation here that is actually going on right now, achieving this in our district. And that's the work that you've supported through MTSS. And that's the work that you've supported through MTSS. When you look at the MTSS, multi-tier assistance support, um, framework for how they're monitoring kids, progress monitoring students, using the FastBridge assessment tools. What you have across the district in elementary levels, right now, you have a, um, a first trimester, second trimester, and third trimester assessment going on for all kids using this FastBridge system. And what's interesting is there's, there's a tracker that's going on, because I've seen it with our teacher, with our MTSS TOSSAs. What they're literally doing for kids is they're saying, here, um, Y, X and Y axes. Um, what they've done is they have months or time on the bottom, and then they have the trajectory. And they're basically saying, okay, in order for the SED child or the EL child to make, to catch up, they need to move up to two of those boxes relative to other kids who are already up high along that, along that continuum of grade level. Um, so what they're doing, what we're doing, when I say we, I'm saying, um, the staff working with principals, working with teachers, is they're assessing kids and tracking their relative progress. Because every assessment gets more difficult in the course of the year. So more knowledge has to be accumulated to do well on the assessment. And then they have these, uh, basically these projection trackers to say, in order for you to get to grade level by the end of the year, your students differentiated by child need to make this relative progress. And then the following year, they use the same FastBridge Assessment Universal Screener. Um, and then third grade, if that was second grade, and now third grade teachers will have that data and they'll have their kids and they'll be able to then say, okay, I know now what I need to do to move Sarah, Joey, and Sammy up to that level. Now, those kids use, using the FastBridge tools, we can track their relative progress using those local assessments, okay? In a way that you're describing, we can do it longitudinally and see how they're doing. But to your point, Chris, that when we went and listened to teachers, what was interesting is we've been talking about FastBridge for two years now. And what we heard from some of the teachers was, um, how useless it was, how they don't think it's a good tool. But then I started doing my own digging and looking into it, but it's because it's, it's so transparent.
About the teachers.
Uh huh, very transparent. And it's just gonna take us some doing to get over that hump.
So we're using FastBridge to determine that need for acceleration of student achievement?
Yeah, so my question is, do we, since it's new, how well is it aligned? Because the state holds us accountable for the caps. And I'm still curious why we couldn't call out specifically the LCAP that we're looking at a 5% growth, not but for these particular groups and that we're monitoring them? Because it just seems to tie in the whole accountability of our EL program, of our, you know, academics, all the things that we're doing. And that, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm still, I guess, a little bit uncomfortable with that number. I get statistics, I get all that. Um, but it's a different world, and we have so many more tools in our toolbox. And it is a, and and given how, you know, where these students are currently and what it it says to me that, you know, with with with, you know, the great people we have in our district, innovation, and all these tools, um, is there a way to tweak it so that we can really make sure that, you know, that, you know, the next LCAP cycle or even two, because, you know, I just played it out mathematically, and we're looking at two or three LCAP cycles down the line. If I'm looking at the numbers and a 5% increase each year, it is pretty scary. What, and then I, and then as I think about what happens when these students are in middle school and in high school, what opportunities they have, the events that continue if we have students, you know, on, on, you know, a CAT score and they're scoring 10%, and it's a 5% increase, and a 5% increase, and a 5%, how long that will take them till that cohort gets 50% proficient? So it's just, those are the kind of questions that I buy that worry me. And it has nothing to do with, I mean, this monumental efforts that we are doing and and great programs and great people. It's just, it's just.
So what you're suggesting is potentially, and I'm just putting words in your mouth now, but you're saying backward map it from eighth grade, because that's when you stop taking the S back until 11th, right? So if you backward map it to eighth grade, and you're in a, you know, a child in third grade scoring the 10th percentile. If you backward map grade level to eighth grade and then divide it by that number of years, then you'll get the percentage each year for that particular subgroup to get to grade level standard. That's really what you're saying?
I guess, and I just looked at, you know, I looked at our, you know, like page 15, and I looked at the mathematics. I looked at SED 28%, I looked at EL 10%, and then I looked at, you know, the other number for, um, page 17. For the caps, EL was 9%, and SED was 36%. So I just was adding 5%, 5%, 5%. So then I was looking at, okay, we're talking multiple LCAP cycles. And so that's the only reason.
I I see what you're saying, and that makes great sense. Because really what that says is to all incoming third grade teachers, sorry, incoming third grade students with that grade level team across the district, on average, this group has got to make 12%.
Yeah.
And and how do we get to 12%? Does that mean to get to 12% achievement, not just, and just do a blanket 5%? Um, it just seems that that approach is not gonna get us where we need to go, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and I think, Dr. Preiter, I mean, our teachers, you have the normal teachers, they are working their absolute tail off. Everybody is really committed, so I just, when you say that to me, if I were, you know, were still in the class, I'd be like, we start breathing heavily and just, um, but it it also speaks to prior to third grade and, you know, how that aligning that happened, you know, we talked about. So I just, I mean, I hate even saying this because, but we're, you know, advocating for our students. And so I, I, you know, start to hyperventilate as you're talking about this, but, you know, it's a concern, I guess.
So for me, big picture, I did it for 12 years in San Luis Coastal. And what I'll tell you is that for the first nine, when you looked at our Sback results, state testing, right? Um, and I think the state test probably has, has gotten better for Common Core in terms of, you know, they used to hate the STAR test, right? Teachers really didn't think that that connected to instruction to reality curriculum wise. But at least the Sback is a little bit closer to it in terms of an assessment. Not that it's perfect by any means, but a little bit more tie in with that. Um, so as a school district, I mean, we saw our results. I I mean, fantastic, right? So both non-SED, as well as our SED, EL, I mean, when you compare us to other school districts? Like, and you, and and I'm not saying there wasn't a gap. But when you looked at our SED students, they were 40% proficient in math, and you looked around us and they were 15. So not, we want them all to be 80%, but from, again, from a big standpoint, when you look at that, that was a key thing, right? In terms of looking at overall results. Um, COVID has basically like decimated Sback. So one year, no results now, zero. Last year, we were one of the only districts that even gave it. And in that, only half of our kids took it. I I mean, so basically two years now, where we're literally starting over, starting in terms of Sback results, right? Um, we, I want the board to know, we, teachers got their kids. We had those conversations throughout that time period. So a second grade or a third grade teacher, they got the second grade results for their students. We looked at that data, the principal sat down and talked to teachers about it, who achieved, who didn't. We, we looked at grade levels and how did grade levels do by school site? And we looked at all that data. It, you know, it's, it's a delicate dance with teachers, right? Having those conversations that's all in the year and talking about, you really didn't make the growth that your peer did, right? Those types of things, but further conversations that happened. Um, on top of that, we really have not had an ongoing assessment system in our school district. So we did, you know, we, we kind of, we worked on, on common assessments, we NDTP those types of things. But this FastBridge, which is really only the first year that we've done it, right? I mean, systematically, um, it, you know, that's gonna take some time to do it. Uh, I, I would be cautious of us, you know, wanting somebody to be proficient on the, on the, uh, FastBridge by the end of, in what's we. No, I, it's, so, so that's in terms of growth, those are things we have to think about and consider.
Are we gonna keep going the Sback? Because we have tons of data on the Sback. Are we gonna, years and years of data, right?
It's gonna start back up.
Okay, so I'm glad we have the FastBridge.
Yeah, we just, we lost two years of that stuff data.
But we have, but we have data that goes back beyond FastBridge that we've given for a long time.
Uh huh.
Yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so we have that assessment too.
That's what Ryan was saying.
Okay, I would thought.
Sback's a mandate, you have to do it.
Okay, good.
Yes.
You have to do it.
And and that, that may be the one, like, what Evelyn was saying, where we wanna, you know, like Dr. Preiter was talking about for getting kids proficient by grade, you know, those types of things, backwards mapping it. It's, it's, it's a little different with FastBridge.
Yeah.
The question about FastBridge and instruction is still one, I think, that is a conversation we're still having, right? That teachers have brought up, right?
Quote responding to their concerns, you say, we're doing, we're giving them more information, maybe sharing.
The other thing that I would say is, I appreciate comparing us to other districts, but I don't really care. We're, we're us, and they're our kids, and we're either improving or we're not improving. So I appreciate that we're doing better, but, you know, I've got a feeling there's other districts in the state that are doing better than us.
So if I, if I can say, um, this, this circles back around to the need for the professional development, professional learning, all that stuff that we, we, um, I was looking at my watch, and it's quarter to 12. Um, I, this is a, this is an important, robust conversation that we need to be having, this is the purpose of this. Uh, but we have some other important things to get to too. Um, if nobody has any more questions, I'd like us to move along because we really, we said one o'clock, and it's quarter to, it's.
I'm happy to move on to focus area three.
I just want to remind people all the time, you're knowing that this is important stuff. I, you know, we, two meetings ago, we, I tried to ask questions on the LCAP. And I was told, oh, no, 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 we have meetings coming up where you'll be able to dig in deep into the LCAP. And now I'm here, I held out on my questions, and now we're here, and I, we're being rushed through it again. So either we figure out, for me, I don't care if the rest of the board doesn't want to do this, that's fine, I'll just go meet with somebody. But we, this is it, man, this is $15 million, this is our job as a board. And I don't want, I'm learning stuff today, I gotta tell you, either I missed it or I'm learning it for the first time. And and I'm, I'm being held accountable for two or three things, that's it, this is a school board member, right? The budget, the boss, and I can't, I'm not even sure if there's anything else legally that I'm responsible for. You, we hire the superintendent and we approve the budget.
Develop policies.
Okay, develop policies, got it, thank you. And I do that, we do that too. But, you know, to me, this, this is the meat and bread. So if we can't do this in this time frame.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting we not do it, I'm suggesting that we have other things as well. And so the board is gonna have to make a decision, you know, do we? This is an important conversation, Mark, you are absolutely right. We've got other important conversations too. Do we want to go past one o'clock? Because I don't see, because I see us going past one o'clock, okay by me. But I want to make sure that everybody understands that that's what's gonna happen. That's my job as president is to bring us back and remind us of these things.
Guys, this is like, and I just wanna, and I also wanna, I also like to point you back a little bit on what I just heard, because I.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
We had at least five, at least five, to my knowledge, I could go further, opportunities to talk about this in various ways, right? This is, it, it's just, we're getting closer and closer. And remember, it's first reading next Tuesday. And then in between that, there's two weeks, and and then we have our second reading. And you still have opportunities to weigh in. It's, it's, um, you know, this draft has been in front of you for, I don't know, two weeks?
It was, yeah, my third, or something like that.
And and all I'm saying is, this has been a really good conversation. And there shouldn't be anything in here that is revelatory. I mean, it's been out there, I mean, this is good, we've been, the board's priorities are driving this. And the things we're doing within it, the specifics, um, are in alignment and they're coherent with this. So there shouldn't be anything in here that is like rocking a world, um, or the public's world. We've been, this is all reflective of the feedback we've received from the board and from the constituents that are on it.
So within, so within my, just within my major interest, right, parent involvement, family, whatever it is.
Yeah.
It shows up in a couple of the, the results, it shows up in surveys. And in this, in this, when we finally got it with numbers, which I think was the last time we got it, was the first time we had it with numbers. So all the other stuff is nice, but for me, until there's dollars, dollars assigned to it.
Okay.
Now it's real, is, and I don't, I'm not gonna, real, I think there's about $20,000 specifically with the word parent involvement, parent engagement. But parents were asking for it. And so out of 15, and actually the total now is 10, I think, but out of 10 to 15 million dollars for the LCAP, there's less than $20,000 earmarked for parent engagement. So I have a concern about that. I haven't been able to discuss it yet. So I appreciate that I've had it, but what it's done, this has generated the questions that I need to ask because now they're dollars. Now this is, now this is my accountability. And so I'm just sharing, because you're hearing frustration, and they've been getting no sleep last week. I don't know.
I, I.
Can I just add some?
Yes, please.
No, this is to, I think one of the conversations that, that I've thought about for a while, when Evelyn brought it up, is for a long time, we've talked about that 5%, 5%, 5%. And this is, this is probably the most in-depth conversation that we've had about 5%, you know, is 5% accelerating the learning that we need to have for our students? You know, this is, this to me has been a, a really important part of this conversation, so thank you.
I guess, um, for me, um, I guess, what have you, you know, given these questions? Again, Mrs. Frye, so I still apologize.
No, no, it's, it's.
So no, no, I mean, we couldn't connect, we tried to.
Oh, we tried to, yes.
But, um, I guess what have you heard that, because this is a draft, that might look differently when it's presented to us? And I, I, I'm not, but just, is, is, because this is a draft, um, are there, do we expect to see? And I, you know, I don't, and and I'm, you know, when I'm thinking about, you know, I'm, I'm still relatively new, I think there's a process of changes. But, uh, what have you heard that might inform you to look at it a little bit differently, but so that we look at it a, a little bit differently? Or is this?
Or they just.
Or this is just a, you know, just, um, a just, uh, a discussion for the purposes of, you know, asking a question? I guess that's what it is, I guess, you know, the confusion of the draft, and we have a conversation. And so what does that look like that, that, you know, you've heard, you know, that informs potential? And 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 I have no business even, you know, me, because we are a board of seven people, so you're carrying me. So what is that?
Yeah, I, I can tell you that the board's feedback is important, which is why you are receiving it as a draft before final, right? So your feedback is important. It's also why we gave it to you, you know, a couple of weeks ago at our, our last board meeting. It was linked in the agenda, this document. I told you, at that time of draft, we're still tweaking things, right? We're still looking at, um, at funding sources. We're looking at items that should or should not be in the LCAP. And by that, I mean, it's still something we do as a district, but it's not necessarily appropriately in the LCAP. We're looking at, um, the actual items themselves. Um, and, you know, in our, when we get to focus three, we'll be talking about, um, counselors across elementary schools. Right now, I see an error in this document, we're saying we want 9.0, but we don't want 9.0, we want 9.4. Because we have Teach Elementary as well, we're going to be giving them a part-time counselor. So we continue to look through the document for any kind of minor errors. Mr. Buckman says that, um, we have $20,000 in parent engagement. I'm going back to this document. I'm going back to this document and I'm gonna look and see, is that really what we have? Or did I not use the right verbiage that will inform the reader that that's also parent engagement? So things like that, I take away from these discussions that we have, and I think you have in the LCAP as early as you did, gives you the opportunity to read through and ask these detailed questions.
And just because money is not attached in here, doesn't mean we're not, parent engagement is a, a system and a structure, it's not necessarily a cost item. You know, and these are things that I'm hearing as well, so that may not tell the whole story, and and I'm not sure what that even means. In terms, I'm not even sure what parent engagement means in a budget line item, is what I guess I'm saying. That's really sending people to to a conference, the ELS and parents go. Is it?
No, not.
What is it?
Not a line item.
No, I'm saying the budget is. Other things, parent engagement, things like you're talking about are not costs, potentially, right?
And and wouldn't that suddenly just be the LCAP?
So there's costs associated with those, this is also a three-year LCAP. And and it is remarkably the same as last year's LCAP. I mean, just so you know, like they, we have, I mean, there's a few items that we've changed, added counselors, took some things off, but this really shouldn't be like brand new to the board, or I mean, overall, this is kind of the same thing we had in last year's LCAP. But there are a few tweaks, but overall, budget-wise, it's it's kind of the same, just so you know.
I have just one, one, uh, looking through the document, as I said, this is a document that is intended to drive where we're going. A lot of time and effort and a lot of people. The one item and I is that, you know, one of our newest programs, um, we have a, you know, line item to add support for the, um, the coordinator, um, at our, at our newest MDL program. But given the, you know, the the challenges of having a new program, um, just above and beyond COVID, um, and support that was, um, you know, in 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 another MDL program, is what we have sufficient to drive, um, what we need to do, given the challenges? So then, I don't have anything, but do we have anything that we can put in place specifically targeted? Because it is such a new, we had COVID, but above and beyond, that's, you know, I saw the one, but what else above and beyond, I can't say another word, wasn't it?
Well, I'll tell you, just cause I've seen staffing, sixteen kids in a class? Seventeen kids? I mean, if I don't, if you, if that's not support.
No.
I mean, that's enormous, and so, um, the DLI coordinator is, the, the, uh, is to ensure that we have, uh, best practices occurring in those classrooms. The class size component is a huge investment directed at Baywood for that particular, um, program to begin to really take off. Not to mention the MTSS feature that's with them as well. So you have, you have many layers of support in it.
An EL teacher.
And an EL teacher.
And it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
And then I would also offer, not in the LCAP as our hiring process, just the work that Mr. May here, you know, to, to, um, by bilingual teachers who are skilled and have.
Well, I, I.
That's a good question, by the way, it's a really good question.
Yeah, yeah.
So I guess, I I'm, I'm just me, right? I'm looking at this and I'm doing the best I can with it, but I also hear sixteen kids in the classroom, we have all these people in the classroom, MTSS. Are we happy with the results we're getting? So I guess that's the next question, cause we're just.
I'm talking about next year.
Next year.
We're talking about next year, am I, am I happy with the results?
That's why you're changing it, okay?
No, we're doing this because we're, we have trim tabs, this is what we do every year.
Got it, got it. Right, good.
And that's why we're doing what we're, we're recommending what we're recommending, because we have evaluated and assessed it and said, okay, here's what we must do at this particular school or this program to get off the ground properly.
Thanks.
That's really how I'm, I'm looking at this for next year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, I'll move on to focus three.
So everybody ready for focus three? Yeah, I think some of the board, I'm gonna need to stand up for a few minutes at some point, just please continue on and then the board members will go outside as necessary.
Yeah, I'll continue on. Okay. So focus three, intentional culture of care, right? We'll create an intentional culture of care that includes a focus on student social, emotional wellness and parent connectedness. There is the feedback from our, um, surveys and other opportunities, um, across groups. And then I put in some notable action items as I did on the last two focus areas. So the first one, counseling allocation and mental health support, you'll see some changes there. I mentioned it just a few minutes ago, we're talking about full-time elementary counselors. And that's something that we heard pretty loudly across definitely our, um, staff feedback and our parents were saying the same thing. Um, we have SEL and at the secondary sites, we're piloting a new SEL opportunity, elementary athletics. You've heard about this through, um, presentations, Mr. O'Connor has given you a, quite a bit of detail about that. That's across, um, elementary schools, and again, that is campus climate, that is targeted at, um, students who are disconnected, et cetera, et cetera. After-school interventions and transportation for our students, equity, what we've heard about a lot. We've heard about that, students, staff and, um, our families. We do have a consultant to work with EL fam- families and develop leadership and other skills. And I did want to note in here, I don't always, um, make, um, a point of letting you know the things that have been removed, because sometimes we remove things. But I want you to know that this, um, LCAP removes the counselor on special assignment, going back to the classroom, and our elementary FTE or, um, MFT contracts. So we are going to full-time counselors at the elementary level if this, um, LCAP is approved. Um, and we are reducing or eliminating the MFTs on those campuses. We are hoping that we are able to hire PPS counselors who have an MFT certificate as well. So they could do that higher-level therapeutic support. But that, um, medical money is in part, you'll see in the LCAP, how we hope to make for this increased allocation across elementary schools. And so you see the feedback on the right, we were, we were told about counseling support, the equity, transportation, and that comes from our SET and our EL families. They want transportation after school after those, um, events that their kids stay for, the tutoring.
Student, student students.
Pardon me?
Student students.
Oh, did students say that? Thank you, yes.
Is the state, I mean, there was some, some, I mean, but they don't know from transportation?
There, there is a bill, there is, there is a push on, well, there actually is a bill, I believe, in the legislature to increase transportation funding.
Yes. Okay, okay, yeah.
And CSB has been trying to advocate for that. Two things, um, first of all, tran- after-school transportation has been a big issue for many, many years. I remember when we cut out after-school transportation, the first main request from our EL stu-, from our EL family is supposed to be reinstitute transportation. Secondly, Lena Egan has a question. Lena, if you're there, go ahead.
Hi, um, I had a question about the counselor on special assignment, cause, um, I had not seen that part being removed and it's alarming to me, um, just, I know you guys are really good about putting TOSs back on, into the site, so is the counselor on special assignment going back to Slow High School?
I, you know, in terms of a personnel issue, I don't wanna get too specific, I believe she's going back to Slow High School, but I don't wanna guarantee you that in this meeting, but I believe so.
Okay, um, thank you, and then the other comment was just that, I, like I said, um, I think you guys all are well-intentioned, um, but I I must admit, I'm super frustrated on the, 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 the lack of high school, additional high school counselors. But if Shelley goes back, then that would be five counselors at Slow High, so then, then we're, okay, so then it wouldn't be. So, but, so my, my, uh, comment is that the elementary athletics was a great program, but it felt like that, like, kicked off in October of this year, so it wasn't really necessarily. It, and and that's two hundred thousand that was put into the LCAP. I don't imagine that's a one-time funding, because it's, if it's covering transportation for the, the after-school programs, it'd be a recurring. So I just feel like there's a mismatch on what all of the surveys have been saying, um, from, uh, parents and students and to what the, the LCAP is re- representing, or the budget itself, to Mr. Buckman's point. I do wanna acknowledge, um, uh, Ms. Marilyn Roger and Ms. Catherine Eisenroth Rogers and, um, Mrs. Evelyn Frame for going to the parent, of what we wish parents understood panel. So I think that that was, uh, made a difference for the organizers as well as the students, so thank you for that, and that's it.
I appreciate your comments about the, um, elementary athletics. We did have a couple of schools start in October, notably CL Smith, um, Lorne and Sinshimer, many of you went to events, I know Mr. West. Pardon me?
Sixth grade loans.
Oh, and the sixth grade loans, exactly. Um, what this LCAP includes is an opportunity across elementary schools next year, so a much, um, bigger program for our students, yes.
I'm trying to hold budget questions till later, but I'm, I'm trying to put that in, because it's interesting how much of this money actually goes forward and forward and forward. But I, on this slide in particular, my concern is, is we're starting to hear, um, from people about counselors and and stuff. And so it looks like at the top, counseling allocation, mental health support, full-time elementary counselors and all of that other stuff you just told us. But if I was the public, I'm not here, I might read down to this and think that that red is taking out that one of the top. And I just wanna be careful of that.
Okay, so Lena.
I just wanna be careful that we're not, that we're not looking, A, like we're saying two different things, and B, that the public doesn't walk away at some point and say, oh, they took out the counselors.
Okay.
Right, it just, I just, I don't wanna have to change that perception.
Yeah, the, yeah. The, the, the purpose of us saying items removed, the purpose is, is we listen.
Right.
The staff, yeah, staff, when we went out, said that they didn't see that, um, as a support to them. And we then recalibrated and in what we heard, largely from the outreach that we did, and and the preponderance of the feedback that we got, um, was from the elementary staff saying they really wanted one person, not multiple, one person they could rely on and lean on, lean into, um, in terms of an elementary counselor at their site throughout the week. And they appreciated all the, the different ways we were trying to support them, but it was, it ended up being, uh, confusing to them and difficult and frustrating, because the, the counselor that met with their, one of their kids on a Monday was diff- was not there on Tuesday, and then it was a different person on Wednesday, and so it was from a teacher's perspective, what we heard was one person all week would be hugely helpful, and teachers faces, when, when that was articulated to me, they're, they're like, a classroom filled with teachers nodding their heads, you know? So I understand it, being a former principal, I get it, you know, one person that everybody knows, that they can rely on and count on being there, it makes a huge difference.
Yeah, all the time. It does, continuity.
Yeah, so that is the purpose. Um, now at the secondary level, you know, Diana's done a lot of work putting the ratios together, our ratios at the secondary level have dropped dramatically compared to what they were several years ago. So we've etched away at this, my biggest concern, I, I do believe we are gonna get extra, well, extra one-time money, um, from the state dedicated to counseling, and I, but I, I don't see it yet, and I'll believe it when I actually see it on the bottom line. But what I don't wanna do, and I'm worried about it, and I've shared that with my team, and I've shared it with some of you, I'm very reluctant to add to this counseling formula, uh, when there's not ongoing money. And, cause the worst thing that can happen is that three years from now, we're talking about laying off counselors, when we know how hard, how hard they work and how important they are. So I'm trying to thread the needle here with the feedback we've given, we've been given, trying to put ratios in a place that seem doable, reasonable, but never enough, right? Um, and I think we've done a really good job of trying to address what feedback we've heard, and, um, while not perfect, um, to Lena's point, I, 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 you know, if, if, there's no doubt, if we could add more counselors to the secondary schools, that would help, but I just don't think it's sustainable, given the funding structures I see out there. It's gonna be a stretch to keep our elementary counselors at full-time, so we're gonna fight like crazy to keep that. But keeping those ratios K-12 at about one to three fifty is pretty impressive in this environment, if we can sustain it. Um, and so that's why our door advocacy at Sacramento level, Washington level, it's huge, especially as it comes to mental health, and, um, and making sure kids have what they need as they move on to college. You know, I get all those, uh, arguments and and perspectives and I value them. But I think this structure in the LCAP will give you, the board, um, should give you, um, confidence to know that we've heard and we've implemented a plan that is better than it was the year before and far better than it ever has been. And I think we can get where we need to go with this plan, and if not, then more money comes in, we'll be back and we'll talk to you about it.
And, and I know you don't like to compare us to other districts, Mark, but sometimes I think it can provide a perspective. Up until this year, maybe next year, we were one of the only districts in the whole county that had elementary counseling at all. So we have continued to do this and it, and we're, and now we're doing even more. So I know some of the other districts in light of COVID and with Esther funding are, but we don't know how long it'll be sustainable for now as well, so. But I think that, you know, that is a way that we have continued to advocate for our kids at all, I think. Just had a quick question, are we, I mean, this is, this is incredible, I mean, it's really what the students, you know, student, just as I know, I mean, the HR, are we able to find all the personnel that this includes in this?
It's, we are hustling.
I know, you're right.
Because, because the CMR is gonna put full-time elementary counselors in place at, I think they have what, fourteen elementary schools? You know, it's just, there aren't enough counselors, cause Palpali eliminated their counseling program. So there, this will become a race to the end, okay? Marilyn?
Thank you, um, I, I just, be a little more clarity around, um, eliminating the MFT contracts at the elementary level and what will take the place of, of those contracted, um, there of this for our students who have greater need, our counselors can, um, address.
Um, we are looking for, so the, the job that we are flying is a PPS counselor, which is what you're familiar with, a school counselor, who also has an MFT dual credential, a dual credential. So we have posted for that at the elementary level, so that per person would be, would have the skills and the licensure to do the school counseling as well as the MFT work. We're not entirely sure what we're going to get in the application process, and Janet Gould in Student Services has kind of thought about, she's reflecting on that, we have, we have psychologists on our campuses, and she also talks about, you know, we do have MFTs at the high school level, if we have a pocket of need, we have that possibility. Um, we do hear from our, um, elementary counselors that the MFTs are not as critical there as they are at maybe the middle school where we have the PPI grant, or the high schools where we have four days a week of MFT at Morro Bay and five days a week of MFT at Slow High, that are, that are more used at the secondary level right now. But she will be working with her counselors, the full-time elementary counselors, to ensure that those kids with greater need who are not in special education get that met.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to the budget summary, and I'm not sure that, um, this is something that's been in a, um, in a board presentation before, but we wanted the board to see how we were, um, each, you know, dividing out the money, it's not really dividing out the money, it's each focus area and the amount that we currently are spending towards that, um, focus. Um, you'll see it here, focus one, two point eight million, focus two, seven point two million, and focus three, one point seven million. I think it's important to note, and I know Mr. Pinkerton can talk about this, um, much more eloquently than I. I think it's important to note, and I know Mr. Pinkerton can talk about this much more eloquently than I can. Being a basic aid district, there's far more in our LCAP. It's not just 5.7 million. You'll see the great number of funding sources that are that are addressed in the LCAP. Marianne, do you want to?
Make sure for the board from a process standpoint, it's always weird, right? Because the governor hasn't even given us May rebates, and here we are talking about the budget in LCAP.
Yeah.
Right? And we don't even know what the budget is going to be in June, but I'm going to ask you to pass the budget May 31st. So it's it's always kind of this backwards process a little bit, right? Where we do this, we improve it, and we really don't know for sure what it's going to be. It's really tough looking at multi-year. You know, it's, you know, we can figure out this year, we can pretty much figure out next year. But what it's going to be like two years, three years from now is tough, right? So what I know is that we have been giving a, we've given a ton of one-time money, and we've hired a ton of staff with that. And so that money is now, we're spending it, right, on kids, need, need, you know, with with needs. In particular, Focus 32, as Mr. Buckman pointed out, for those students that are most impacted, right? That's where most of the money is going for those intervention programs. And so, you know, so now it's going to be our work to kind of, how do we figure this out, right? So the other thing we have going on is we have, you know, negotiated contracts with our staff. We have employees that are asking me about mileage costs. You know, I don't want to be a parent educator on the coast because I don't, I I won't make enough to drive to Los Osos. I mean, literally yesterday, you got, you know, those are the types of things we're feeling from staff. So we're having to take that in, right, looking at paying people more in these contracts, but still trying to offer things. So our personnel costs are going up, but yet we're going to lose the one-time funds. And so it's just like, it's a delicate balance as we move over the next couple of years going through. So we're going to have to make those, you know, those contracts with staff a priority so that we keep staff and retain staff, right? But what that's going to mean is we're going to have less people doing more work end of the day. That's what's going to happen. That that's just how, that's how this works, right, as we move forward, unless we have massive amounts of revenue to come in, the school district. So and and what we know is our 4 million that we're receiving right now, 1090 funds runs out in three years, right?
When is the last thing, when does it have to be spent by that?
The COVID funds?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, COVID funding may have for two more years. But what what you'll see, we we had anticipated keeping these things for this this coming year and the following year, when in reality, we're probably done with COVID funds next year. So we have 6 million left at the end of 2122, it looks like right now, of COVID funds. And we're going to spend 4 million of that next year, leaving us with only 2 million potentially the following year.
And these are funded?
And not all the COVID funds, things like Resolute that we work, and Roblum, those types of things, you know, supplies that we purchase, you know, those aren't in the LCAP, but they're still going to get charged with COVID. So we're, you know, we're spending, we're spending those resources down as we should for intervention for our kids, for programs that we need to do, right? It's just we're, we're spending them quickly. And so that, those are concerns, right? So those are the balance points that we'll, you know, we're trying to work through, figure out as we move forward. But, you know, we have to begin to, you know, we can't necessarily have class sizes of 16, 17 anymore. Like, we've had really low class size last few years. So I'm going to have to, you know, a little bit ratchet up next year, a little bit more the following year, right? Like, those are the things we're going to have to do so that we pass our budget, so that our budget meets, you know, our revenues and expenditures kind of come together. So right now, I don't know what's going to happen with the state budget. We're hearing a lot about these one-time dollars that, and and, you know, we have deficits, you know, the following year and the following year in terms of looking at it, right? Just personnel costs and expenditures, those types of things. As we spin down COVID, as we're not, you know, so hopefully that will help us in our multi-year projection, those dollars that we will potentially receive this summer. But it's, you know, it it's a, it's an issue that we face. That I, you know, from my stand, my chair, I have to sit down and have a reality conversation, right, about where we're at and what we can do and moving forward. So so, I mean, we're already, we've been having those conversations. We're, we're going to continue to have those conversations over the next couple of weeks as, you know, Katie puts together the budget and the whole year projection and what it looks like. Because anything we cannot do now is going to help us two years from now on the budget, right? Like, it all just compounds as we go. Make no mistake, STIRS and PURS is an absolute killer for school districts in the state of California. So that alone is, over the next three, is $5 million in increased costs. So STIRS goes up next year, 19.1, it's like a couple, you know, 2.5 million. And then PURS goes 26 next year, 0.3, it goes up to 28% the following year. So I mean, so again, the same amount of people costing more means that people are going to have to do, you know, that's just part of, working conditions don't rise, right, with, if you if you get paid more potentially. So those are the, you know, those are the things that we just, that all school districts are going to face in the state of California, right? What happens with the economy? I think I feel pretty bad about property taxes over the next few years. If anything, the county has not kept up with property taxes. Like assessing homes and getting those dollars in, they're behind by like a year. So I think that's a positive for us. At some point, Diablo's depreciation is going to stop. We're going to lose the Diablo money, which is something we have to, you know, deal with. But at some point, we're not going to, you know, we're not going to have a 5% increase in property taxes and have Diablo drop 2 million, 2 million to make it 2%, right? That's going to end soon, within the next year or two. It's only, I mean, once we're, once the unitary tax is down to 2 million, that's just where it's going to end, right? It dropped from 7.5 to 5 million last year, which affected us. So those are kind of big picture things, right, in terms of looking at the budget and revenues. So I think that part will get better. I think property values are going to, you know, we're still building in San Luis Obispo in particular, right? So I think that will maintain itself over the next few years, which is a positive thing for us. The economy in California, I I have lots of concerns about where we're headed. Not next year, right? They have a lot of, a lot of funds right now. But what they're saying is potentially that this dip, right, where the state has all this revenue, and then all of a sudden it just drops to nothing because corporate income tax drops dramatically, the stock market, fullest. So that, and that's something even the politicians may consider a layer, that their people we're talking to, they're saying they're worried about this, right? So how much money are they going to put in ready day versus giving out one time? We're going to, you know, we're going to find that out. Maybe vice comes out tomorrow. So we should have some more clarity. Now, that said, tomorrow, we have to put a budget on the board agenda. So there's going to, we're going to have to try to do some tweaks between what, you know, the public hearing on Tuesday 9 and two weeks from now on the 31st. We'll do our best to give you the the most accurate information we can, realizing that it 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 could change after that, right? Depending on what happens in June. You know, we, I have to be conservative in my numbers moving forward, so it will be a conservative estimate at this point. I think it will be better than what we're, you're going to see Tuesday and on the 31st. But until we, as Dr. Gray said, have those dollars in our hands, you know, we just have to be cautious moving forward, right? So those are kind of big, just kind of big nuggets for the board to chew on a little bit as we go through this, right? So but, you know, again, we're talking about cutting 4 million of this out next year. Because that COVID funding is gone. So which goes back to the question, okay, so what things in the, you know, you know, in this plan are having the most dramatic effect on kids? Achievement, counseling, those types of things. And those are the conversations we're going to have to have over the course of next year, which, of course, is data and results and all those things we've been having, we've been talking about, right? So all the surveys and, you know, so that's my budget overview of where we're at. And so and I'll, again, I'll be working with Katie to kind of refine that over the next two years and.
So what you're saying is you've been real popular.
Yeah. It's hard for employees to see it, right? Like, especially you saw it in, I mean, you know, it's going to be really, even the, what we've agreed to potentially with raises, waiting for the, the vote's still on those those plans. There's going to be districts around us that are going to give staff more than we did.
Well, I think, right?
Because they're going to get dramatic increases in LCFS from the state for a year.
It's not sustainable.
It's not, right? So I'm just telling you, so those are the things. But, I mean, we're, we're stretching ourselves with what we've offered to the staff, we're stretching ourselves. But it's going to be less than what other schools, two years, we're going to hit, you know, that will come out, employees will talk about it, you know, just, it it is what it is, right? Staying within our means is, of course, we have to.
Well, I appreciate you talking, re, re, reemphasizing the one-time dollars, it's important for the public to hear.
Yes.
It's really important that, you know, that we are spending our money for students, but it is one-time money for us, you know? Then once we have things, people, you know, it just, it's that perception that it's always going to be there.
Always tough to take away.
So, so when I looked at these numbers, and I looked at the COVID, and I'm not an politician, somehow I came up with that that $4 million is 40%, represents 40% of that total, is it not there?
It's a good chunk.
Right? And we know it's gone. Okay. The other thing that just dawned on me is we don't have one soft pile of money. As you reminded me, we have two very soft piles of money. Diablo, we know, has got a deadline and a dollar, and now we've got this other dollar. I think we have a second budget in our pocket that says what we do. When we look up here to see Title I funds, is, are those all our Title I funds?
No, they're not.
Okay, so.
It's not all of our Title II, not all of our Title III.
Thank you.
Definitely not all of our general funds.
Okay, so so do any Title I funds now get taken away from Title I sites and spread out across the district?
There's a, there's a, a specific amount of Title I money that comes to the district.
Okay.
But it's a small amount. Most of the money goes to sites. And if anything, what's happened last year in particular, or this year in particular, is the sites were given all of this extra staffing and intervention through COVID. And then on top of that, they added using their Title I dollars, right? So it's been a, you know, a lot of intervention at sites. So some of that, of course, as we reduce, they're going to have to decide, you know, the school, schools like Council of decided what they want to keep, what they don't, you know, those types of things. But but definitely those Title I sites do have more, you know, or have a funding source that that are not on Title I schools, do not.
And then, I know it was kind of off the cuff last time, but when I asked how much this all came to, I think it was mentioned 15.5 million. And when I did.
No, go ahead.
That's okay. I mean, if this one did it this time, it's more like 10.
I guess close to 12, 18.
Close to 12, okay.
Yeah.
All right, good.
I went through, I went through a bargain last time, I guess.
Thank you.
I mean, it's every change.
I just, I just, I just totaled those, you know, so.
I mean, we were literally like every day, I think over the past two weeks, looking at funding source, like, what can we do, money, what can we pay? All right, we have to move, you know, use this, save the COVID, you know, for another year, those types of things, right? So we, we, we used a lot of COVID money this year, which helps our general fund, right? So normally, in a normal year, like before COVID, you know, we would probably have spent $8 million on the LCAP of general funds. You know, where LCAP supplemental was, you know, 4.5 million, and we would spend eight, right? With all the extra things that we do in the school district, right, in in terms of, from that standpoint. Now, this year's LCAP supplemental, it's like it's about $5 million. And so we had spent, it was, it was 4.7, ended up being 5. Over the course of the year, you know, looking at the calculated LCFF calculator, with the potential increase that school districts are going to receive in LCFF, that jumps from 5 million to 5.7. So it's a, it it grows, right, as the LCFF, as supplemental grows through the state, so. And those are the dollars that have to be targeted. And what you'll see is, for the most part, you know, Focus 32, $8 million, but most of them are focused on those intervention programs, those dollars.
All right, so I, I, I hate to dampen your enthusiasm, so to speak, but I'm not sure we're going to keep building at the pace we are. And the reason is the drought. I've seen, I've lived, I've in in Tucson, I know it seems, but they literally just put a building ban in Cambria. They just said, no building. And it could, it could happen here. So I just, I throw that out because it's a huge, any new, any new houses could be all dependent on on how much water. And I'm wondering, is it even take back permits that they've already given? So I think we'll see, I think that's going to be part of the discussion. I kind of like sometimes to just remember for myself, our budget, total budget of everything is about, what, 117 million annually?
Well, I think with all the COVID funding, we're about 120.
Okay.
But then it drops back down to 115, right, in a year, so it doesn't, it's not like something that continues to climb. So we've heard, had this dramatic climb, one-time funds, and now it's going to go back to normal, right?
So the last time I checked, the city of San Luis Obispo, the city of San Luis Obispo budget is about the same. So, I mean, just to put things in perspective, I don't think the city does as good a job as we do, by the way. So I, those, that's my biggest question is the the Title I. And and as I think about it, I think water is going to play a big role in how much money we're getting and getting in. Can I go back to Focus Area 3 just real quickly?
Yeah.
I apologize.
Yeah, not at all.
I was listening and not looking.
Do you have a slide number?
So you wanted this one right here?
Here.
And actually, if we could go to the slide before, the slide before this.
Got it.
Okay, so as I was reading this, it would seem like a lot of people, at least in one or two of those students and community or staff, was this request for increasing resources for struggling families or outreach to all parents about resources. And I totally get that we're doing a ton of stuff. We have a family resource center. But, and I, I don't want to stop any of that, if we could do more, I'd love to do more. But at some point, are we tied into the city that they have a program for struggling families, for homeless families, for SED families, does the county have a program, CAPSLO has a program? Do we cross poll, if they're the, those communities, I know the city has a homeless community, do we cross pollinate with any of those things? We have a person sitting on the homeless, do we have a person, and do we want a person at CAPSLO? Because there's, there's so much we can do, and there's other people that.
Yeah, yeah. So our our FRCs, which you are so familiar with as a board, and they're so effective with our families, they do have connections throughout the communities, right? So some of the resources they will offer to the families are from some of the agencies that you're talking about. And then I'd also remind you that Chris Dowler, who's, you know, PD, but also Deputy Director in Student Support Services, is also our homeless foster agency. So he works in that area, he interfaces with agencies as well. I'm not sure if that answers your question.
Yeah, I, so it does. What, what, and I don't know, maybe I'm, I'm, I'm wrong, but I did have a city, elected city person come and say, what can we do more? What can we, how can we interact with this, with the district more? And and it's, it was, it was literally, you know, there used to be a chamber education unit, I don't think there is anymore. And so, right? So I just, I'm just, I mean, it just feels like maybe to me I'm wrong, but it feels like we've become more and more isolated instead of sharing, sharing a burden. And and we're just, you know, yes, we're such caring people, but you're just going to say, sure, we'll find more food, we'll, we'll feed everybody every day. And I, I just, I don't know how much we can take on.
What are, what are FRCs funded through?
Well, a couple of them are through grants. You have, and I'm trying to remember the link we have a grant through, and I think one other agency. And then I believe one is paid for through our.
We pay for one, and then we also pay to help them continue during the summertime, that's why they look up.
Exactly, we added that to the agenda.
But most of them are not, like, not district-funded, they're grant-funded, which is nice.
Yeah, and that's, at the end, it's that's solid, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah. But then also, there's been this probably, sorry to interrupt you there. Transportation again here, transportation was number one, transportation somewhere else. There's a whole mass transit system in this county, this city. Is there?
They use it. Yeah.
Okay, because I, I mean, when I was growing up, we were sitting on a bus pass, we should go in.
Especially Laguna. And this is, Lena can talk to you, talk to you a lot about it. But, yeah, a lot of our students, in in particular Lamps, I would say, a lot of them use mass transit. Because our bus zone of influence is, you know, only so big. So a lot of students use it, Lena's worked with the city a lot. Because they, and they're having the same issues that we do in terms of drivers.
Right.
They went through a period where they, they were canceling the bus every day, kids said, no. So I know Lena was an advocate on that front to to make sure, now you'll see, kind of parents' word messages going out sometimes. Where we're alerting parents, letting know, you know, what's going on, so cities are aware of that.
So the city, when the city says ride share, that's to share their buses, or is it?
I don't know.
It's not putting families together and saying, I'll drive, you'll drive, so like, aren't you? And then my understanding is in rural, rural, rural districts, they will actually pay, so if there's four parks out here, and one mom's willing to take everybody back and forth, she actually gets paid. I think it's a state program, but I'm not sure.
We've had to do that with special education parents.
You have, okay, so we have done it.
Yeah.
Okay, so I don't know whether.
There is.
So I, I just don't know whether, you know, maybe when we're hearing this, I was at Hawthorne, we laughed last night, and, or, that before, and, um, and it was transportation, came up over and over, and I, I mostly speak Spanish. But I checked in and it was like, that's all I, I was.
It's a quarter.
Okay, so that goes for my team, so Focus Area Two, thank you.
We are, yes. I think the last piece, and I, I think we spent quite a bit of time on metrics. I just had a couple of points here, and actually, one of my, uh, one of my bullets here, I'm, I'm gonna amend on the fly. So just a little bit about metrics, actions included in the LCAP should lead to growth in the metrics, right? We want our metrics to show that. But we also, um, want you to know that we do make changes the following year. We should be looking at those. You know, you've got your five percent rule. Should we be doing five percent? Did we see such small growth or such large growth that we might change it? We want the metrics that we look at, that we discover as a result of the LCAP, to inform the metrics the next year. Um, we report broad metrics at the LCAP. While each individual site tracks detailed me- uh, metrics on the kids, you've seen those presentations from Lars Starrm and her department, they are looking at care for each child, and I believe that Dr. Freger mentioned that as well. Um, the LCAP specifically asks for dashboard data, but the dashboard has been suspended due to COVID. So that's something to remember. We will keep you posted as that becomes available. Um, local benchmark data, they are effective and innovative data points and have not changed significantly over time. That's the one I'm gonna change on the fly, because dashboard is new to us. But I would say the BAS, the MDTP, California Healthy Kids Survey, we have used those over time for the, um, LCAP. And then, yeah, and use truth, you're right, use truth over time, I'm sorry.
Citron Mending.
This is, I'm, I'm mending, I'll add that in there too. And then just a reminder, you've heard this a couple of times, metrics have been disrupted by COVID over the last couple of years, and you see it in the document, you see those blank years when we talk about CAS. So, that's the last slide.
Any last questions or anything else I can address?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you guys for all of your questions and your comments. They really, really helped inform, appreciate it.
Are you ready to move on to? Just six point zero two, Mr. O'Connor.
It was kind of.
No, we're not, go for you.
I think we're transitioning to safe sports policy.
We are transitioning.
So.
Like a half hour of that.
So.
So, I'll let you catch. Why don't we give it two minutes?
Two minutes, okay, very good, thank you.
Yes. Yeah. Thank you.
I'll let my hair grow out so you can see how old I am.
Great. Just let Mandy know we're back.
I can hear you, so you're good to go.
Okay, thanks, Mandy. Okay, Mr. O'Connor, six point zero two.
Actually, I'll let Mrs. Frost turn this off.
Okay, very good. It's actually going to be Mr. O'Connor and myself doing the unsafe sports policy presentation. And super happy to be here today. This has been a moderately long process. We've been working on this. We're working with Resolute, Holly Warwick, you know, as well. She helped us begin this process. And we're happy to show you the safe sport policy that we drafted. And kind of the high point details of the plan, as well as stakeholder feedback. We consider safe sport plan important to groups across the district and made sure that we queried them on their input after letting them look at the plan. I do want to call your attention to this flow chart here. There is a broad umbrella of safe policies and resources necessary in any district. You'll see at the top, we have a safe sports policy that we're working on right now. You have the draft in your agenda item. And then there's also safe co-curricular policy, which is our next task, right? We want to look at all of the activities that our students participate in. Today, we're just looking at the safe sports policy. Under the safe sports policy, we have policies that guide the work on the ground floor. We have an athletics handbook that Mr. O'Connor has been working on with the athletic directors and coaches. Our athletic trainers have a handbook that guide their work. And we're also working on our booster's guidelines, right? We have a booster club at Moray High School and at Slow High School, a lot of laws and regulations that they must follow. We're looking at that as well. And then when you think about safe co-curricular policy, we also have ASB guidelines, and we're looking at that. So all of the activities, both sports, academic clubs, after school, before school, we are shoring up those policies. Today, we're just looking at the safe sports policy.
To pick up where Mrs. Frost left off, you know, our goal of this session, and we've shared this same presentation with our booster organizations and with our student athletes at both of the high schools. So obviously, we want to grow greater awareness and knowledge around our safe sports policy. We want to solicit feedback and answer questions that we may have, because this is a draft form before our final presentation for review, something that someone like Dr. Prater talked about. And for you collectively to lean into and with us, the safe sports policy, that's our release form.
All right, a little bit about our development process, because we really did use a number of resources. In terms of policy reference and development, San Luis Coastal Board policy is throughout the document. In every section, we have administrative regulations, and then we rely heavily on CIF policy for our safe sports policy. Mr. O'Connor talked about stakeholder feedback. We started with our administrators, secondary administrators. They read the document. Actually, important parts of the document gave us feedback. Our athletic directors, we then met with, and we did a half day with our athletic directors. We wanted a deep dive from them. We met with site coaches, booster clubs, Mr. O'Connor met with high school athletes from both schools. And I'm really looking forward to him sharing that and then this Board of Education meeting here. Reference material, state federal law is noted throughout the document. We also referenced the U.S. Center for Safe Sports, CIF, as I already mentioned. And then the USA Gymnastics Safe Sports Policy. In fact, that's where we began. We started with that organization, looking at the policies and regulations that they put together over the last couple of years, and then built from there. This is just a Photoshop of the draft policy. As I said, it's in your agenda. And I also have a couple of hard copies if you're interested, a very long document. We've tried to divide it out so that it is comfortable and natural to our readers. There's a parent and guardian section. There's a section for our student athlete. There's a section for our athletics coaches and volunteers. And then we go into an appendix where we have a lot of resources for especially our coaches.
So as we started to work with our booster organizations and our student athletes and our coaches and our A Ds, and as Mrs. Frost and I started working through this, we wanted to call out some critical statements, some critical definitions that really kind of catch the eye. Because it's something that we need to sort of draw attention to. For example, like one-on-one contact and defining what that one-on-one contact looks like. Defining for people, you know, what a coach, how do we define a coach? How do we define a mandated reporter? How do we define a hostile environment? So we're thinking about putting it in terminology that's easy to digest from a parent perspective, from a community member perspective, from a student athlete perspective. And so these are just a snippet of some of these. Dual relationship was really an interesting piece as we tease this out, because we would have coaches in our community who may have a dual relationship with a student athlete. Meaning that they might be related in some capacity to the student athlete. But as I talked with student athletes at Moray just last week, one of the student athletes framed a question about, well, what if the coach was like my next door neighbor? Or what if the coach was a friend of my parents? And then the coach, who's my neighbor, would often contact me maybe to cut grass. That was an example of the student reference. And so you're sort of thinking through that mindset about that dual relationship. We defined it here as perhaps that person who the coach may be having some sort of familial relationship with the student athlete. But it was also interesting, because as the students started to recognize this, they understood that coaches are human beings, they're people, and they wear many hats. And in a smaller community, they're very visible. And so this was an example of some of the critical definitions that we had.
We did start our document with a vision and mission for San Luis Coastal Athletics. This has been embedded through our administrators and especially our A Ds. And I think also pulls in the vision for San Luis Coastal in general. So that we're committed to providing educational and extracurricular experiences for all student athletes in a positive and safe environment. I think that's one of the most important things that we can say here. Endeavor to develop the values of athletics, including sportsmanship, teamwork, cooperation, and competition. It supports student athletes in becoming courageous and creative thinkers, skillful collaborators, and productive contributors in a diverse and rapidly evolving world, which you are very familiar with from our own SLC vision. And then the mission, I won't read the whole thing, but that if you look at the dark points, the district strives to make the athletic program a source of pride for the student population, student athletes, schools, alumni, and our community.
So, you know, it's interesting when we look at how we're framing out this conversation about the role of athletics. It's really connected to something we just talked about this morning with LCAP, when we talk about the building of culture. The athletics programs in our district has a major impact on developing a culture at the school sites, at the secondary school sites specifically. As we start to think about building that out of middle school and elementary school to build that connectivity. With that comes the ability to build a community, and a community that, I think, Chris, you mentioned this, where it's not necessarily about the pep rally. It's about a sense of belonging. It's about a sense of pride. And what's the role of sports? You know, some people might look at sports as being the developmental process of an elite athlete. We see it as that. We see it as life skills, the ability to be part of a team, the ability to connect and relate. But all of it is predicated on safety, always on safety. And when we think about safety, the social and emotional safety of our student athletes, the social, emotional, and the connectivity, and the physical safety, the emotional safety, all of those aspects. So that's the pivotal thing that we need to do. And so when we put this together, we really wanted to make it clear for the reader to understand where the synergy comes. And in the centerpiece, we have training for athletes. That's the centerpiece. That's where it really begins and where we really need to start our focus. So we're talking about a robust training program for all of our coaches. We talk about an accountability process for reporting. We talk about the athletic structure and inclusivity. And then when we move to the left-hand side of this, we're talking about how do we put safe practices in place. Specifically, whether it's related to hazing and bullying, student athlete training, coach training. When we talk about the key concept of prohibition of one-on-one connection, and then defining what that looks like and giving specific examples of. How do we use social media and digital communication in an ever-evolving environment? We talk about safe travel procedures. A lot of our student athletes travel quite a lot. And we need to make sure that we cover all of those aspects with regard to safety. And then when we talk about student athletes and parents, a lot of times we've forgotten that we need greater awareness and training for our student athletes, but also our parents. And this came out of our conversations a lot of times with our coaches and our flight directors. You know, Mrs. Frost, Mr. O'Connor, it's great that you're focusing on the training of coaches, but what are you doing to train parents? And how do you bring them up to speed on best practice and expectation? And again, goes back to the previous conversation about building community and culture, because the parents have a lot to do with that building of culture. And then when we talk about reporting process, the reporting process is so key in our district. How do we, as a district, provide avenues for recording for student athletes, for members of the community, for stakeholders, for parents? And then what are our legal obligations and what's our follow-up procedure for that? So again, in our overarching document, we wanted to call out all of those aspects.
So we're going to go over six broad areas that are in this safe sports policy, unless we address a couple of these. So supervision by trained coaches, interruptible contact. We want it observable and interruptible. Student athlete and parent training, parent communication and information, how we give that important information back and forth. So that they know what their kids are participating in, social media and communication, and then transportation and overnight trips.
So when we want to look at the key component about how do we ensure that all of our coaches, all of those adults that are interacting with our students and our student athletes, what are the requirements? And we call those out. And we talk about our safe sports policy. All of our coaches will have the opportunity to review our safe sports policy with this document that would come through you. We would talk about our human resources, the onboarding process. We talk about our fingerprinting process, our criminal background process. We talk about our CIF code of conduct that we've modified from CIF. We talk about a review process, our web handbook that Mrs. Frost referenced, our athletic trainer handbook, and we talk about annual refresher training. So each and every year, our coaching staff, along with our athletic director, with our site administration, with myself, Mrs. Frost, working with them to make sure that they are up to speed with all of the expectations. And then the specific trainings themselves, on the right-hand side, CIF coaching certification. All of our coaches take a CIF coaching certification course. It costs fifty dollars for them to take, and they all will take it, and they all currently take it with us. A new course that we're adding for the training of our coaches, bullying and hazing. Again, established from and utilizing the CIF courses that are available to us and also the National Federation of High School Sports courses. They already do CPR certification, first aid and concussion courses. Those are ones that they already currently do. It's interesting, heat acclimation course is something that we had kind of on our books, but we weren't enforcing. It was interesting when we started talking about this. Well, the usual story would be, well, we're living on the Central Coast and we don't have huge heat patterns. But we now participate in central section for CIF competition. If you're going next week to the CIF track and field competition that you can in high school, and it's hundred degrees, you wouldn't believe it, that there's going to be heat acclimation issues there. So our coaches need to be aware of heat acclimation, especially when our student athletes are competing outside of maybe San Luis, okay? And then obviously sudden cardiac arrest. This may seem like a lot for our coaches to take on board, but it's really important work. It's like what Dr. Prater a lot of times says, it's good work. It's what we need to be doing. And we take it really, really seriously that our coaches are up to speed and well-trained before we put them with student athletes.
Leslie, do you know how frequent, how long certification for each of these courses will last?
Yeah, it's a really good question. We tried, well, first of all, we would ask for them to be able to do this annually, when we talk about annual refresher training. But I think usually it's every two years. We usually put them through with regards to CPR is usually every two years, because there's changes in that, protections within that. So we were only looking at, we sort of find every couple of years.
One of our, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. So there's always been, I can't remember, but it's a card. I had to go get fingerprinted. The sheriff's department in school. Is that, is that up here or is that?
Yes, yes. So the H R onboarding paperwork would be the criminal record check. So that's the fingerprinting process that we'd be putting all of our coaches, and we do already put all of our coaches through.
Okay. And then on this, somewhere, maybe the slide before this, it says, oh, that they have to say that they read it? It's somewhere earlier, maybe in another slide, it said.
Like affirmation that.
Yeah.
An affirmation that they read it. Is there any reason we're not asking them to just sign a piece of paper that says they read it?
Well, actually, it's really interesting, because I met with our H R staff just a couple of days ago, and through our Helios process, who were constantly making and asking for our staff to go all the way through, then they have to affirm that they have actually read it, checked the box, and signed the document. We all do that on a regular basis, so they would be doing something very similar, because it is digitalized. Rather than having paperwork and trying to find where's that woman did that person sign it.
Okay, so.
Okay.
So bottom line is they're gonna, we're gonna have a record somewhere that says, I read it.
One hundred percent. And it's also, it's also an interesting feedback piece that came out of our coaches and our flight director conversation. You know, a lot of times people see it as a, can I do this remotely, or can I do it at home on a computer where I can just check the box? I don't really put that time and effort into really reading. And we're, we want to support our coaches, but at the same time, this is important work. So our vision would be for our coaches to come together, a larger group format, for them to be undergoing a measure of professional development. Let's picture G two, where they're there at the beginning of the school year. They have to feel connectivity to a larger group of people. They can't feel like they're just like the J D tennis coach doing this document at home on a computer. They have to realize they're part of a larger institution, the sporting institution of the coaches fraternity of San Luis Coastal. And so that will be done on an annual basis or prior to the start of seasons. And Mrs. Frost and myself, working with the principals, the assistant principals, and the athletic directors, can put together the refresher training and the courses and the slides. So it's much more interactive, as opposed to work your way through it on a module and I'm sitting at a computer screen. Because there's sometimes so many gray areas where you, as a coach, are sitting there thinking, like, how should I address this situation? And by the ability to have that as a community kind of building and conversation grows their capacity as well.
All right. Number two here, observable and interruptible contact. And we've talked a lot about this as a group, Holly, Leslie, myself, but also with our stakeholders, right? The coaches, very, very important for them. And our boosters gave us a lot of feedback. But what we're saying is that all adult contact, the student athletes, has to be observable and interruptible by another adult. And in our document, we go through what that, you know, what that might look like. That there could be somebody else in the area. A coach can still work one-to-one with a student, but there should be somebody else in the area. If there isn't a coach in the area, the parent has been invited to join. There's some other observer. The A D is up in the office overlooking the court, where the coach is one-on-one with a basketball player working on the shot, or something along those lines. We want it always to be observable and interruptible, and that includes communication as well. And we'll go into social media, that type of communication, and a few more slides. But we're trying to restrict the way that our coaches communicate with their athletes and eliminating one-on-one communication. If they are emailing, they should be on our own district parent square. If they are texting, we understand there are situations when that happens, they should be putting another coach on the text if it's going to a single student, or they should be doing it with the entire team. So we're eliminating that one-on-one contact. All contact has to be open and transparent, and as I said, it has to include the entire team or another coach or athletic director. I will say that when we spoke with our coaches, they said, you need to understand how many emails your A D will get, how many texts your A D will get. It's only if they're trying to contact a single student. Other than that, if there's more than one of the contact, you're fine. It's the one-on-one for obvious reasons that they're trying to really reduce or eliminate altogether. Let's see, student athlete and parent training. Leslie went into the coaches' training, and that is very, it's very deep and important training. We're also looking at our student athletes and our parents. For our student athletes, they have to sign a code of conduct. They also will go through the hazing prevention training for students. So there's two trainings, right? There's hazing prevention for adults and a different training for students. So they will participate in the hazing prevention training for students. They do it once a year, and every year they participate. If we happen to have a three-sport athlete, they'll do it with the first group, and then they won't have to do it the second and third sport that they're involved with, but they will have to participate in that training. And again, will note that they did so. Safe sports for athletes training, athletic paperwork, so the appearance form, the proof of physical. And then we are also recommending, but not requiring, CIF student health and wellness training. So it will be available for them. In terms of parent guardians, they always sign a permission for participation, but we now have a code of conduct for our parents. And you will see this in like AYSO sports outside the school system. And honestly, this was added after our stakeholder feedback from our athletic directors. And they were saying, you know, the vast majority of our parents are supportive, positive, you know, wonderful observers at our events. But every now and again, we have one or two parents who not only have a single situation where they might be inappropriate in some way, shape, or form, but a second or a third. So they want, first of all, the code of conduct, and then we're just talking about how we get information out. We have board policy about this, how we contact our parents to warn them and work with them about what it looks like on the sideline. And then we've also offered recommended training, and many of our parents might participate in this. A guide to misconduct in sports, a guide to sudden cardiac arrest, concussions and return to play, and then CIF student health and wellness. And those links are available for our parents.
So about cardiac arrest, this is a new area.
How long have we done the sudden cardiac arrest?
For several years.
It's been a while, yeah.
Several years. And I, you know, a couple of years, because we have A Ds on campus.
Smallest one at the secondary level.
Yeah, at the secondary level in athletics and on the campus in general. So we've done that many, many years.
Before COVID?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, many years.
We have athletic trainers in both secondary high schools as well.
Yeah. So you're hearing a consistent message. So when we're talking about communication, as Mrs. Frost mentioned, we're talking about obviously district platforms. So we want to make sure that that's pretty clear. We want to make sure communication is open and transparent. We want to make sure that we build that trust with our stakeholders, and it has to be timely and consistent. That's so important. It's an important detail. We need to reiterate with our coaching staff that they're communicating to students and parents at a time that's appropriate. We use the frame like maybe eight in the morning to eight at night. You know, we shouldn't be notifying students and parents at like ten o'clock on a Friday night to tell them that, hey, by the way, I expect you at training tomorrow at eight a.m. on a Saturday morning. We, obviously, we understand weather conditions. However, it should be timed. It should be in a district platform. It should be transparent, and it should be open for others to be able to see. And those are just general operating principles, if you notice throughout all of our documents, okay?
Okay, social media. A couple of points that we want to address here. So official accounts for individual teams are owned and managed by the A D or an administrator from the site. Big conversation at our boosters meeting about this, and they were in support of this. There are experiences that there may be a few accounts out there that are either silent or are, you know, I guess, controlled by somebody outside the organization. So they were very happy with us taking over those accounts. Photos or videos from public competition are posted on an approved platform. We want them to be contextually appropriate. And then this last point here, again, this is feedback from our parents. We were really limiting our social media access. We wanted the school to be in charge of all of it. We didn't want any communication. But then you'll see that in a couple of minutes. We didn't want communication between our coaches and the students using social media. But our parents told us about college recruiting applications and how important they are. MaxPreps, BeRecruited, DraftCard, Huddle apparently is used quite a bit at high schools. This helps our athletes make it to the next step, right? Play for their university, get a scholarship. So we're really working with our families and our coaches so that these applications can still be used. And they are a single student, right? A single student will have videos sent to a university, that kind of thing. So we're working on that with our families and our A D and coaches. But our athletic staff do not do, and you'll see that at the bottom, they don't maintain private athletic staff social media accounts with student athletes. They don't engage in one-to-one contact on social media between an athletic staff or a student athlete. They don't post anything that would be in violation of the district's bullying policy. And the use of social media as a platform for team communication, we are eliminating that. So you're not communicating with your athletes through Snapchat, if that's right. If that's right, you're not communicating with your athletes through Instagram. We've got approved platforms where you can communicate with your students and families.
So an area that we've really focused on this year is our transportation of overnight trips. And we really have, we've done a great job with regard to making sure that there's constant communication and approval process. And we've brought this into the electronic age where we're actually having electronic fillable forms for athletic directors and coaches to complete and to submit to Mrs. Frost and myself. And when we look at how our student athletes are supervised when they're on overnight or field trips, when we're bussing kids out of town to Los Angeles, to the valley, wherever it may be. Also a reporting mechanism for our coaches to know if there are disciplinary situations that may arise or athletic injuries. How do they report, what does that look like from an overnight or a field trip kind of situation? And then what does that observable interruptible interaction look like at a hotel? In the parking lot, at an event that's off site? There the reminder that there's a nexus to our school, they're still being representative of our school. And then what's our communication with our parents? What does the travel itinerary look like? Is it clear, is it concise and how timely is it so the parents know where their student athlete is and who's responsible for them? And making sure that there's constant communication and utility from Mrs. Frost on our calendars currently. Everything is uploaded so we know which teams are traveling where and to what, to what location? And we have contact information for everybody, so we're all looked in throughout the 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 trip, so to speak, but definitely throughout the year.
Right, Chris? So sometimes when student athletes do overnight trips, they share rooms with each other or 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 clubs, groups, things like that, they will do that. And, you know, it's a group of students behind a closed door.
Right.
Without an adult. Does this talk about how we make sure that that in that situation, students are safe and certainly bullying, hazing, things like that? But, you know, there could be sexual encounters, there could be drugs, what do we do about things like that?
Yeah, it's a great question. So there's several several pieces to come up with that. So first of all, looking at a safe sports policy, giving best practice to our coaches is how they monitor as they monitor students going to and putting lights out. So if you're in a situation trying to make sure that there's two adults doing that bed check, making sure that room check gets placed. Obviously, the onboarding process for our student athletes, for them to be aware of the disciplinary expectations associated with that overnight trip, that could be perhaps something that I have to look at. And making sure our coaches know what's the expectation and the protocol should a situation like that arise. So building that culture and awareness around and then educating the parents toward that as well. All means that we're going to be able to keep our student athletes safe in that situation.
Oh, we do go into detail in this document about reporting and response. So how a parent, how a student athlete could report concerns and then what our district actions and follow up might be. Actually, this is some feedback we got from our booster parents. They wanted us to beef up the section, like, when will we get feedback? Like, if we put in a concern, what's your process and when do we get feedback? So again, our stakeholders' feedbacks were really, really informative. Leslie, you want to talk a little bit about what our hierarchy is here?
Yeah, it, you know, it's sometimes we take it for granted where stakeholders kind of know who answers to whom, right? And we wanted to draw out and call out our structure. So you have at the, you know, you have assistant coaches, you have JV coaches. A lot of times they'll work within a program, a sport. So your assistant coaches, your JV coach may well report to your head coach. But your head coach works within a program, which is the athletic department, which regards to maybe your assistant athletic director or your athletic director. Again, it's programmatic. But ultimately, at the high school and the middle school level, there should be a member of the admin team, hopefully an assistant principal then, who would be overseeing athletics. And then obviously, the assistant principal would be reporting directly to the principal because again, as part of that programmatic approach. Well, where does that go? It goes to the director of secondary, this situation would be. If that is next, the next step on that ladder would be Mrs. Frost as assistant superintendent. As we shared this out with student athletes and parents, there was a lot of like, oh, like there was an aha moment in the room where they could physically and visibly see the structure within our organization. And we've talked very openly, if there's a conversation or a a situation that needs to be discussed, at what level might that fall within the structure? And if it was something that might be resolved with a JV coach or the assistant coach or the head coach, maybe it can be resolved there. If it can be resolved at the athletic director level, maybe it's resolved there. If it needs to go to an assistant principal level. And and to make sure that parents and student athletes and coaches all know where they can take a concern or question they may have depending on the question or concern they have, if that makes sense.
Mark. So in in listening to this, the next, the next square down, what I heard was that's where parent is. And then maybe the next square down from that would be where student is. So is this a communication chain that we're saying parents? You, if you have a question about your student on the football team, you have to go to the student coach first.
Ideally, depending on the question that you may have, if you've got a question, I'll just use your example. I wouldn't say it's it's a a square down, I would actually say it's it's the structure of responsibility that I think I heard. But if you have a question about practice schedule for this weekend for whatever the sport, you might be able to field that question to the assistant coach or the JV coach. You could obviously ask that same question of the athletic director. However, you might be able to get a very timely response by just asking the coach in your communication. If you have a situation where you're unsure about the practice or procedure that the coach has employed towards your child, you might well then go to the athletic director. But the athletic director might set up a meeting for you with the coach and say, gosh, I'd really like to set this up so that we can kind of come to a consensus about, does that make sense?
It does and it's great and it's it's very clear except for assisting coach to JV coach. So my kid's playing on the varsity team, I'm not going to go by choice to the JV coach, right?
Good. So in that kind of situation, your JV, your head coach of the varsity team has assistant coaches on that. But your JV coach also could have an assistant coach. So throughout our organization, we have JV teams that have assistant coaches. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm just not seeing the possibilities early for parents, but that's okay, this is great.
Okay.
Totally wish that people had this.
All right.
So then how to report a concern? And this is an area we covered with our booster parent group, with our student parent group because we want to make sure that it's very clear for how to report a concern. And we went through this, so you know, first and foremost, contacting the adult, contact a staff member, contact someone at the campus ideally. And we laid out the structure, that hierarchy, but also it's just important to reach out, it could be a teacher, okay? We also have our district website. So how to report a concern? It's very visible, it's very clear and it's linked and all of those reported concerns comes directly here to Cabinet Level. And then we can work backwards from there. And obviously reminding our stakeholders that there's a title line coordinator who happens to be our HR director and making them aware of that. And remember, in this document, it calls out those specific pieces of the puzzle. This is just an overview for the presentation.
And then finally, oh, excuse me, didn't go so far, feedback. We've mentioned a couple of times throughout this document that feedback from several groups has been critical to some changes and and development of the document. We went to athletic directors and coaches. Then we did a combined boosters meeting. So we went out to the county office of education and Morro Bay High School and Sanloes boosters came together and we met regarding this plan. And then Leslie met with student athletes at both Slow High and Morro Bay and they gave us great feedback. Our athletic directors and coaches wanted us to centralize the training courses. And Leslie talked a little bit about that, can we bring them together and do it together? They talked about paid time for coaches. We've added trainings and it should be part of their jobs, so we're looking into that. They were the ones, as I said, to consider a parent code of conduct and then follow through for inappropriate behaviors at competitions. And we had a really robust conversation about that. In terms of booster parents, we had a lot of feedback. We talked about the feedback loop on any surveys that we give to our students or parents and then also feedback for any investigation to the individual, either student athlete or parent who lodged the complaint. Clear expectations of how the process should go and what to do if it isn't going in the direction. And that could be anything in this document, any training, any rule, talking about social media, talking about transportation or overnight trips. This is a really interesting one that came up with with our parents and it's about travel, less than a hundred miles, but multiple hours gone. How are we feeding our students? Are we expecting them to bring their own food? If we stop, you know, you'll see a lot of teams stop somewhere on the way home if they have a late game. Do the kids have to have their own money? You know, are we providing something from the district? It was a great, great reminder for all of us as we think about the long days and nights that our athletes put in. Social media, again, they were very happy with our changes here. They wanted a single parent or student charge. We talked a lot about parent square and student square and really, you know, a platform that would be reasonable for our students to use. We did have parents ask specifically about the one to one contact. And I I'm very, I'm very interested in this conversation and kind of going down this road a little bit more. But a couple of parents saying, my child has found great value in the one to one contact they've had on the field, the individual training sessions. So tell me a little bit more about observable and interruptible and how my child who is, you know, the point guard on the basketball team can still get some one to one time safely with the coach. So it was really good feedback for us. And then the sports applications that we talked about, that came directly from our parents. And then I know, Leslie, you worked with student athletes. I want you to kind of talk about how you did that and the feedback that you received.
Yeah, you know, I I met with student athletes, a broad rate of student athletes, both at Slow High and Morro Way High. I will tell you, it was really interesting because it was, you know, the latter part of the day, it was probably seventy five at each session. And as we started out the conversation, I gave them the frame, just like I gave you the frame of why we're doing what we're doing. And they started to really lean into it. They started to really pick up a lot of the areas that we started to talk about. Their body language definitely changed, their demeanor changed and there was a real intention on their part of, wow, this is important stuff. The feedback they provided, they really liked the specificity. They really liked the specificity around the training specifically for the coaches. They really appreciated the level of detail that we had gone into around this policy. They talked a lot about, it would be great if our coaches had more training and awareness around the emotional part of coaching and as a student athlete, the emotion that goes into playing a sport, the social emotional aspect, but just the highs and the lows that are often our student athletes experience as a fourteen year old, fifteen year old competing and then a letdown or the high of it and then the letdown and just that that piece was it was really telling. But they also talked about nutrition and they would like to see the the coaches have greater awareness around nutrition. They also felt it was really important for our coaches to have great awareness about the kinesiology of of coaching, stretching, warming up, cooling down. Because a lot of coaches per se will will focus on the technical aspect of what they do as opposed to maybe the connectivity of or the preparedness and the post-competition. And they're more wrapped up in like, how do they swing the bat right there and then, and then the game's over. And so the 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 students gave us a lot of feedback there. They were they were excited. They were excited by the fact that they were going to have a role to play. They were excited about the fact that our coaches would be go through extensive training, as it says. But they were also excited about the fact that they would themselves be part of that training process. And they agree that sometimes parents aren't the best behaved at events. And sometimes it's nice when somebody of authority takes that on and stops it because it puts them in a bad place, the student athlete. They just they just feel like it's kind of overwhelming and I thought that was really good feedback. I will say this, from a gender breakdown, the buy-in and the leaning into from our female student athletes was pronounced, was absolutely pronounced. How much they at both campuses really, really gave feedback around a safe sports policy. I would tell you that. Anecdotally, it was just overwhelming. Watching it, getting the feedback, listening to, knowing kids, just working with kids, it was like, wow, all of the female student athletes, and it's quite a lot in the room, we're like, okay, thank you.
So I guess the question might be, why did you get that aha moment? Why was it so pronounced? Do we have a problem or did we have a problem we don't know about? Or is it just a perception or just a the general sense of feeling, say?
To be honest, I I think it was as a as a as a person in our organization, it was an awareness, it was an aha moment from them to to me representing us that it's like, wow, you guys get it. If that makes sense. Simplistic in nature, but it's like, why you guys get it? Like, that's awesome. And to know that a person of, an adult in a power role gets it is really, really important. It speaks to like Student Senate or it speaks to youth truth survey or it speaks to anecdotal evidence. It's like, wow, you're looking out for me, you see me. You see me and you see the 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 struggles that I have and you're asking for my opinion. And you're taking that opinion and you're saying the adults in the power dynamic are going to be trained and they're going to be working with alongside to make it better for me in my capacity as a JV athlete in this sport who's still really dedicate a lot of time and energy. Thank you, that's what it's about.
Wonder if you have any questions?
Yeah.
I do just want to.
I saw it, I counted, I was counting.
We know, it's even.
I was about to say thank you to all of you and then it came up on the screen. But it's, this is something I think is the long overdue and just across the country and across all schools. And very important and very brave to step out into this area, so thank you very well. We're doing it, it's a reap benefits, I know.
Super impressed with Diane and Leslie and they they just rolled up their sleeves and went for it. So thank you guys.
Well, and I have to say, Dr. Crater came to us, came to us and said, this is important and I want you to put time and attention to it, so.
So at all during, in the parent discussion or at all during the parent book, has there been a discussion about the balance of academics and athletics in children's lives? Or is that some, another time and another place?
It was such a good point, but yeah, it's a really good point. But I don't I don't remember that coming up at our booster meeting, no.
Yeah. It it's a great question, Mark, it's a conversation, honestly, for another day.
Yep.
Because we looked at it more of the safe sports policy, but the balance, life balance, work balance, all of that is something that we're we're constantly talking about.
But you put, to me, the the opportunity now that you've made, you talked about subgroups earlier, the high school, then you made a subgroup of parent boosters, you brought some, right, did I get that right? Parents should be in school together? Wow.
Yeah, they're same place.
Wow, did you mean? That's a, I was trying to think, how could we take advantage of that? I mean, it's like whole big natural. So maybe that's the other, another barbecue and another discussion.
Yeah, but I but I will say this, the athletic handbook comes to mind. And refresher training and being, having had the role as a former coach, working with our coaching staff to think to understand that there's a balance within that dynamic of coaching. Practices don't have to be three, four hours daily, six days a week. You can do a lot in seventy five minutes and how you set good practices for practice. Right, think about that. So when we're talking about how do we train our coaches in that training program, that's what we're going to be talking about.
Keep it timed for four hours.
Excuse me? Keep, yeah. You know, I referenced this when I was presenting to the students in Morro Way, you know, there was a time when coaches thought maybe it wasn't a good idea to give kids access to water, right? And kids were looking at me like, really? And I'm like, oh, no, like, that wasn't in the far distant past where that happened as a practice. And for them to understand, so I see that as being the overlap with regards to the academic piece. You know, they are students and athletes, student athletes. So how do we strike that balance with a walk-on coach who's got really a passion for whatever they're doing, but also they need to understand that this is an institution and organization that about connecting and building culture and community and academics? Because that's key.
So just, I guess in light of today, so when you invited the parents from the two schools. I guess in light of today, so when you invited the parents from the two schools, what percent of the parents you invited actually came to get them?
Well, from the ones that we invited?
Yeah.
Yeah, we invited the boosters, we invited the executive board of the representatives of the boosters of all schools and they were all there.
They were all there, I was thinking more previous discussion, you know.
They were all there and they all were appreciative of each other.
Yeah, and then.
And I think they learned from each other, like, right? That was part of the conversation, we do this at Slow High, well, we do this at More Way High. And there was a little bit of interaction, it was powerful.
And then we'll say that we had the principals and the leadership and the funding directors from the middle schools and the high schools there as well.
And then just this last thing. This is amazing, but this this is not a state new state mandate? This is not something every school just does?
This is our next golden bell.
Okay, I was just saying.
Just saying.
I mean, so that we didn't just call this up and and put our name on it?
No.
Wow, okay. That's brilliant, thank you.
Yep, thank you. So we have one last. And CSBA and definitely a CSBA presentation.
Yeah, yeah, good point.
Yes, our last one, please?
Our last one? Okay, and Diane, if you would, can you drive for us? And Shelley and Chris are joining us, so Shelley Benson, our district COSA counselor on special assignment. And Chris Inman, our lead counselor at San Francisco High School are going to join us this afternoon. We found it recently this morning, but now it's actually good. We're still on Ryan's birthday, so it's good. We're looking at class ranking. And so we're going to look at a brief conversation about class ranking and why I want to bring this conversation with regard to class ranking. There, this is something that I feel very passionate about as a as a former high school principal, as a former high school teacher and working with talented, dedicated counselors at the at the high school level. And knowing students throughout high school. This is something that weighs heavy on my heart, on my mind. I know that weighs heavy on our counseling team and and on our students and our parents. And it is timely that we really have this conversation about class ranking. When we look at our vision as our district, we're looking to prepare students for a life of purpose. We ask them to be courageous and creative. But I'm going to, you know, challenge you this afternoon to say that I think, believe passionately that I'm not sure that class ranking really truly aligns with our vision. I'm not sure that having students ranked against each other encourages them to be courageous and creative. I think it asks them to conform to a metric, so I'll come back to that. When we look at our strategic vision, we're, we we talk in our district for a strategic vision for twenty-one through twenty-five of Culture of Care. We talk about the social emotional needs, we talk about student voice. And if we think about and focus on a student voice and how do we nurture that student voice, we want to hear. And we pride ourselves today, we pride ourselves so many times on how we hear from our students. Student Senate, youth truth survey, feedback loops, presentations that our counseling teams do with each of our grade levels. We talk about compassion, we talk about COVID and what we've went through over the last couple of years. So part of our strategic vision, I would argue, doesn't necessarily align with the concept of class ranking either. Talk about high expectations. We talk about learning environments that empower students to take ownership over their learning. If they truly have ownership over their learning, they have an opportunity to freely choose courses in high school that excite them. That gets them to be creative and courageous. But again, I'm not sure that the class ranking as a metric allows them to do that. And then the final piece that I want to draw your attention to is, and I commend you as a board for having this as part of our strategic vision. We are willing to evaluate our progress. And when you think about that, that's why we're here today. Like, we're evaluating our progress in our strategic vision. We're willing to have those somewhat uncomfortable conversations to reflect on, is this best practice for our students? Because our students are the epicenter of what we do. So I see real potential in our conversation. You may or may not be surprised to know that we have a board policy admin rank that talks about the graduation ceremony. And this is all of the board policy admin rank talks about when it talks about valuable to and solidary. So we're not having a conversation about valuable to and solidary. And that's not why we're here or what we're talking about. It's ironic that our policy says the superintendent or designated shall establish procedures that ensure fair determination of the valuable to and solidary. That's it, that's all it says. We do not have board policy or admin rank that talks specifically about class ranking. We do not. And I'll turn it over to Shelley.
So we wanted to just give a quick, you know, just in giving you all the information about, a quick slide about how the ranking is determined. So do you want to talk about the GPA part?
Yeah, so GPA, you can see, I took a calculator from a Google Sheet. And GPA is calculated by points, so an A is four, B is three. If they do an honors or AP currently, it's five out of four. So it just kind of shows you a breakdown on how that would be calculated unweighted or weighted. And then if you look on the on the right, I did a breakdown of, this is our current senior class. So you look and you see the weighted GPA for our our number one, four point seven eight, very impressive. That GPA on the left, actually that four point six two is actually a student that goes to our school, that's the max that they can earn. That four point seven eight is a student that came to us after their freshman year somewhere else, they had weighted credits somewhere else. But what I want to look at more is, you see that four seven eight is number one? And then I pulled at the bottom in bold there, four point four, four point three, four point two, four point one, four point oh. And the rank that they have associated with that high level of a weighted GPA. So if you have a four point oh weighted GPA, you are ranked one hundred and thirty-first when you graduate your class.
And we'll get to it a little further, but that's where we're doing our kids a huge disservice to say that I'm number one hundred and thirty-one. I never even earned a B.
If you if you never did an honors class and got all As, you're one hundred and thirty-first.
Well, so there's a lot of students that have a four point zero. Can't they all have the same number? So that you don't have to put them in.
Well, if we're unweighted, yeah.
Four point zero, I'm just saying, taking that for an example, if a lot of students, twenty students have a four point zero, then they're all going to be the same number.
Yeah.
They shouldn't have a graduation of having to be lesser, because there's no way to determine that, right?
Yeah, it's the calls at the time.
So is that the way it is functioning now?
This is our exact way.
This is the way, yeah. So there are some students that fall, like even right now, you can see number thirteen.
You can see the threes, yeah.
There's two at number that are number thirteen, so it does tie off, but then the next one down goes to fifteen, not fourteen. So those ties then get broken to the next person down, so.
And right now, our way, our our ranking is determined by the overall GPA every single course I've ever taken. So that's that's another factor too that I can kind of look at as we move on.
Shelley. So I might not have heard you both correctly, but are you saying that if you have come from an out of, you're out of our district and you come in and you have more experience or age or whatever, however they accumulated elsewhere? How does that work? How do you make that happen?
So so for instance, the student that's number one came from a school that had a honors geometry class for freshmen and an honors bio class. So when it translated over to us, those get weighted because of weight.
And you can see how close they are, they're like by at the point or like.
And number two also came from another district.
Right.
So.
I was saying to get rid of that distinction so that it's more fair.
Well, but because we don't have a policy on how we accept that, it's they come in and we take them as our own. The other thing to consider, which is another aside, is that that four point six two is only available to students that go to Jacob. Because they have access to more AP classes sooner than everyone else, because they start their Spanish sooner. So that's a secondary distinction.
So it is weighted.
So that's the slide on on calculation that they.
I think that this is just yet again where students see their rank, so they see their they see their GPA on their transcript. They see their rank right next to it. Most kids, and I think this comes up later, have no idea what it means. I mean, they're they're just really like, what's that number next to my GPA? A lot of parents are confused by it as well. We are, because we rank, we're required to say that we rank on the Common App, so all of our private and out-of-state schools. And then we would have to report their rank. There is an option on Common App where we could just say we don't rank. And then you just get the GPA that the kid is applying with and when they submit their transcript. So which in our mind would feel a lot better and I think we could support kids a lot better if that was the case. Parents often ask about it, want to know how it's calculated, how is this going out? Why, you know, why do we have this? How come my kid, my kid's never gotten a B? Why is it so 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 much higher? You're like, I can't talk about someone else with you, you know? It just kind of pits kids and families against each other. It just is a not a positive environment we're creating.
This this seems like a perfect time to have this conversation considering that UCs and CSU's have eliminated the SAT and the ACT.
Yeah, you're just a script ahead.
Yeah.
A UC doesn't use any ranking, you know, I think even Leslie was shocked when we were kind of going over this. There's not even a GPA on a UC application. They they figure it out.
They do.
So kids are self-reporting their their grades, the classes that they chose, all their extracurriculars, all these wonderful things that it's done. And even sometimes the kids are like, where do I put my GPA? Like, it's not on there.
So can they do a formal with this subjective information?
They can figure it out, like the kids can, even put a GPA.
And Aries can and Aries can report it. We're still figuring out how to make it accurate on the way it reports back to students on on Aries. But UC and CSU will do their entire, their own GPA calculation based on what the students input.
So neither UC or Cal State pass or.
A quick question regarding just, you know, with the UC and I don't, I can't keep up with it anymore. The, you know, not requiring or not using the SAT. And I remember hearing something, I'm not so sure, they ran more GPA course selection, things like that. Is that just kind of a fluid thing that they're figuring out or?
They dropped the testing, but I think that the rest is is still pretty fluid. I think it's just putting more weight on the things they've always looked at. So on, still a course re, course selection is still a thing. They want to see that continued success, they want to see consistency, right? In the things that they've chosen for their extracurriculars. They want meaningful personal statements and things like that, so.
So it gets it gets a little weird with UC and probably CSU as well because isn't there a requirement for UC that that they accept a certain percentage of the top students in California? But but the guarantee is you might get accepted to UC, but you don't get to.
Don't get to, and it's per set, not not per group, yeah.
Exactly.
So basically, it just kind of really sets you up for, if you're doing this, if you're doing well at our process, you're you're really most productive at a private university, which is what you're about to show us right now, I guess.
Well, I think that what we've found is that private universities aren't even asking for rank anymore. Like, they're not, you know, they're not even asking us for that, so.
They do the test.
Yeah, so we're just not seeing that. They're saying, you know, we'll take it if if students, if they provide it. But if we don't provide it, it doesn't hurt us to stop it at all, that we don't consider it when we're looking at whether we're accepting them or not.
In my opinion, I find that ranking them only if it's a priority in the one run. And we have some, I have a phenomenal student I had a few years ago was third in the class and didn't get into one of the top schools. And I'm thinking to myself, that top school looks at your rank and goes, you're third, why didn't the top two apply? Maybe we would have taken them. Like, that's, you have those sort of internal conversations with yourself because you're like, you don't know what you don't know. But like, imagine if we never said that that student was third. Would they have looked at the transcript differently then, wondering, well, what did one and two apply if you're number three?
Also, I mean, if you if you're talking about a pool of students applying to a university, there's variability between high school rigor. And so number one, you know, I'm going to pick on these people and I don't need to hurt anybody's feelings. No, but think about number one at Camden where there just aren't that many class classes available to students versus here. Or think about, you know, if you're in a small rural high school in the Central Valley, you might be number one, but the rigor that of the courses you took was not the same as the rigor that we're offering here. So you can't compare those things at all. You can't compare break point averages very well either.
Is it my understanding that that what the colleges do look at is whatever is offered at your school?
Did you take advantage of the opportunities that were provided as a one of this?
But that also kind of leads into the next slide too, because you were asking, you were comparing schools. So we looked at schools in our county and then the top schools in California. And you'll notice, most don't use ranking at their own sites.
World doesn't use ranking?
And so when you're thinking about one of our board objectives, looking at US News and World Report, when you think about how do you get ranked in US News and World Report? A large percentage of that ranking is related to your advanced placement enrollment of students and success of students in advanced placement. That's how you hit this top ten. And those ten, top ten are not using ranking for their students because there are so many students taking advanced placement courses and examinations at the end of the year. And they're encouraging that, and so they want to make sure that the students feel comfortable doing that. And one way to stop them doing that would be ranking them against each other. And then when you look at districts within our county, UCMR does not rank, Templeton does not rank. Interesting, Tuscadero ranks, but they don't publicize the ranking. So the students don't get to see their rankings. If they ask, they can tell them, but it's not out there just the way it is in our.
So it's not included on application?
Correct. So I just thought it was an interesting site. So then we wanted to shift gears a little bit and give you a brief overview of the impact of AB one oh four. So if you're unfamiliar, earlier this year, AB one oh four issued back in September, which basically said, any student that was enrolled in comprehensive high schools, twenty twenty-one, including summer, could, if they wanted, apply to the school and the district to have any grades that they received changed from the letter grade, if it was an A, a B, a C, a D, to a pass. And if they received an F, it would be a non-pass. And so we took on that charge and we communicated to our secondary schools. And our secondary schools did an awesome job of feeling that information. And then we took all of that feedback and then we adjusted students' grades based on the proactive nature of our communication. This is a unique count of the students or parents who got back to us. And you can see that we had multiple students at multiple grade levels got Bs or B pluses who requested that that be changed to a pass. The number one reason is because of class ranking.
Doesn't calculate.
Once you get a B, it doesn't calculate. And once you get a B, you can never catch up. Like, they know that it's statistically not possible.
I just wanted to go away.
So when you have that as a frame of earlier part of the year, that kind of was that catalyst catalyst for like action. Because we're seeing due to COVID, many, many changes of the landscape as well as the the emotional philosophical bent that you get from our presentation as well. But definitely AB one oh four changed the landscape dramatically.
Could I do a map, like a mathematical representation of how that plays out? If you go back to the slide that had the GPA calculator? So.
I wanted to do this.
I I wanted to do this live, I figured out how to do it.
Just wanted to pass what the level report.
I I couldn't do it, so yes. If if this number was changed to sixteen and they got a B, their GPA would end up at a four point six zero. When they do, if they chose to do AB one oh four, because that four point six zero puts them down point like zero point, four point zero two. If they chose to wipe that clean to a pass, their GPA goes to a four point four, uh, six four. So they end up with a higher GPA for removing it because it's calculated less on the total on the end. So we get a bunch of people that are using math to game the system. But then we stop and go, well, why are we even doing this?
Why are we allowing it?
That's happening, is it even worth it if this is the kind of stuff people are going to do? Because in in our opinion, when people are applying to college, if the college sees a P on the transcript, it could be anything. It's probably not going to, they're not going to go, well, you probably got an A. They're going to go, well, what are you hiding? And so they're hurting themselves to try to game a system that ultimately is hurting them anyway.
But if they had the pass removed and got that higher ranking, then is the P no longer visible, but only the number?
The P is on there.
Yes.
Oh, it'll stay there, okay.
Instead of a letter grade or anything, it shows the P next to it.
So they can't really remove it, they said something about the.
So it just doesn't, it doesn't, it won't calculate it to their, to their GPA.
Could I, could I make the, ask a request from Mandy? Is people try to talk one at a time, she says it's hard for her to understand when you have so many people talking at once.
So if we go to possibly, I think it is slide thirteen, I don't know if that's possible. One more? My question, I think it is. Yeah, maybe you're.
I think this is, these are all excellent points about where we really see, as you, someone just beautifully said, gaming the system. That's, that's what we're seeing kids doing, is pitting kids against one another. I think it's, it's encouraging kids to choose things because of their weight, so because their AP, because their honors, versus taking a course at Tuscany, versus taking a CTE course. Versus, those things, once they're added to the transcript, drop the GPA or flatten the GPA, even if it drops it. But they flatten it because it's not weighted. And so you have kids choosing things and figuring out, you know, how many APs Chris is taking, you know, I'm going to take one more. And I'm like, is that something you're even interested in? So it just becomes this really unhealthy environment that we're, we're helping to create.
So a, a quick question, because I, you know, the, not, you know, joining with the, with the ranking, ranking system, you know, it makes perfect sense to me, but are we looking at, is, I guess I just misunderstood. Courses will be weighted, so, so there will be kids who still want to, you know, quote unquote, take those to kind of bump up their GPA. Are they, you know, I'm just, so, okay, but this takes out that, as you said.
The label.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So in true fashion, we wanted to hear from our stakeholders. We wanted to hear what our students thought, we also want to hear what our staff thought, we want to hear what our parents thought. Ironically enough, slow expressions at San Francisco High just had an article about a month ago, a student led article about class ranking. And so there's real synergy around that. So this is some of the information that came out of that article, because our students feel this, like, pretty real.
And these are the kids we're seeing in the counseling office?
Yeah.
Kids are coming in talking about that. I mean, I know you guys hear about all the other mental health concerns, but these kids coming in just like, I got a, I got a B, you know?
And then our counseling team, I reached out and asked our counseling team, how do you feel? Asked our leadership team, how do you feel about class ranking? These are quotes, I keep it from that.
So the, the staff, remember, go back a little bit, it said, tell me a little bit about the, many high schools, it's been on the school profile percentile band, is it numerical ranking? I mean, I've seen that.
We do that on ours actually as well. We let, we break down the percentile bands between the point ones and stuff like that.
And then some parent comments. Yeah, that middle, that middle bubble, it could have been my oldest boy. He, he came home, he's at like a four point four, and he's ranked like sixty-eight. And he goes, Dad, I don't know, you know, I don't know what to say. And I go, I looked at him, I go, don't worry about it. You know, you got a lot of bright kids there fighting like crazy to, don't worry about this, doesn't matter.
Well, kids who, to, to Dr. Crater's point, kids who choose to get involved in things at our school, their GPA drops.
It's B.
It's B, anything that's not weighted, that one, it, it, so it just, yeah.
It's, it's kind of ironic, we just finished the safe sports policy, and if you're a student that has to be, who really wants to be in leadership, you're going to be one hundred and thirty-four, no matter how many As you get.
Yeah.
And, and does this, does this, does this mean that we maybe don't have as many students participating in our career pathways? Because some of those classroom, some of those classes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Wow.
So we're, so we're just incentivizing kids to take CTE classes.
That's right.
Yeah. Anecdotally, I can share with, I mean, we all can share lots of stories, but anecdotally, I can share a story with you of a student who's currently in our system, who's going to choose not to take one of our capstone classes next year as a senior at one of our secondary schools, because it will ensure that that student drops out of that top five, even though that student has an exemplary transcript and will easily go to a prestigious university, most likely ideally, and who's nationally recognized in many, many aspects. And they'll choose not to take that capstone course, because that capstone course will remove them from the top five. That's not what we want to be doing.
No.
So we come today with the recommendation for a variety of different reasons. Obviously, there's an emotional piece that Shelley will talk about. But when we look at AB one oh four and the grade change that brought this about earlier this year due to COVID, you're seeing en masse groups of students and parents requesting, as is their right, to change a grade or a class distinction or a ranking that's available to them. We also have to remember, over the last year, year and a half or two years, we've watched our students being in virtual learning. Some of our students were in virtual learning all last year, using Apex as that curriculum of choice. Somewhere in the half-day learning in the afternoon, somewhere in half-day in person in the morning. All of our students had virtual summers over the past couple of summers. You know, students who come, as Chris described, from very, other districts outside of our own, with different rules of engagement, different APs. So there's those areas that are easily manipulated, that can cause variance that our students maybe don't have opportunity for or acceptance around. And when we look at our recommendation, our recommendation centers around the class of twenty twenty-four. Not necessarily twenty twenty-three right now, because there are juniors going into their senior year, but definitely our sophomores and our freshmen. Point being, our juniors currently, they're going into their senior year in about four or five weeks. A lot of them may have experienced many of these areas also. However, they've also really put a lot of time and effort into their development. But our sophomores are, are sitting there, their freshman year was pretty much.
Open.
VLP, half-day, in-person, not in-person. Their pre-high school summer was virtual, their end of ninth grade summer was virtual. Our current ninth graders, exactly the same. So these are reasons from that perspective. But then Shelley, if you'd like to tie a bow on it.
I just, I think it's our responsibility as the adults in this whole situation to really look out for the, the mental wellness of our students. And I think that we create a negative environment, we create an environment where, where academics become competition with one another. And, and that's really for the top, you know, our top kids, our intellectuals, for, you know, all of our straight A, all AP-taking kids, and it just makes this really unhealthy environment where they're already stressed. But what it does to everyone else is it really like demotivates them. They're like, I can't get there anyway, so like, what's the point? You get all these kind of, you know, discussions going on. And I, I feel like it really kind of destroys the sense of community that we're trying to, to create on our campuses. And it makes it us and them, and it, it just is, I'm like, and, and I applaud Leslie for bringing it forward, because I can tell you for the twenty-six years I've been here, I'm like, why, why do we do this? What are we doing? And is there a policy or isn't there? And so I think just clarifying that and having you guys get a chance to think about it, thank you for doing that. Because I know it's something we've brought up every year, and Marvay is right there with, with, with us. This is a unique design.
So my plan, if it's okay with the board, is to bring this back for an action item in, during the June twenty-first board meeting. Once we get past all the other things you have to do in the next two, two board meetings, which are LCAP and, and hopefully labor agreements and all that kind of stuff. I think we just want to get past that. And then June twenty-first will be our, our end of the year board meeting. And that could include the action on, on the safe athletic protocols. And this would be my intention. If, if that works for you guys, that's what I'd like to do.
So you just got one thing, but were you all?
June twenty-first. Yeah, yeah. So I just wanted to, well, thank you Shelley, Chris for coming, Leslie for bringing this forward and, and for, this has been a long day.
Yeah, I have a request. Shelley, would you guys, if you guys are talking, I just have this, one second. You can stay, I just have a personal.
Are we good?
Well, I just wanted, before we go, I just, I just want to remind everybody, we have a board, we have our regular board meeting on Tuesday the seventeenth. We are scheduled, we have it scheduled, a closed session for three thirty. However, part of that was predicated on working on Dr. Crater's evaluation, which I think we're going to try to do on Thursday the nineteenth at eight thirty.
Okay.
So we'll adjust that, that open, that closed session meeting probably for four o'clock.
Yeah.
And then our regular board meeting, Chris, is at five. Okay? I think that's it.
Thank you, Shelley.
Oh, yeah.
So are we still, are, we're still on Zoom or meeting? Okay.
I just, I'd like to apologize to Ryan.
For what?
Well, it was, in my world, apologies has three parts. So this is what I did, I interrupted you, and it was horrible and long. And quite honestly, we need comparative data for lots of stuff. So I apologize for that. I recognize it and that it was wrong. And I'll try really hard not to do it again and try to think before I speak, and no more interruption. Thank you.
Shelley, are we here?
We are here. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, guys.